I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council for the City of Wildwood for Monday, December 9, 2019. Ms. Sterninger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Bo.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Grogg Nani.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And thanks to those of you that are with us this evening, if you have a cellphone or other electronic device with you that is on, if you would please turn it to silent while we're in session, we would appreciate that. Moving to informational items, it looks like we have five before we go to action items. Is there anything under information that any member of the council would like to speak to or have a question about? Councilmember Stevens.
Hey, Joe, I had a question on the community park update. Did I read that right, that out of that project, it was only like $10,000 over the original estimate? Is that...
From the perspective of the park construction, it is complete. There'll be a final invoice. And so, at this stage, we're about $200,000 under budget. I don't think we'll be at that level when the final invoice is provided, but hopefully, we won't be over.
Okay, yeah, I just, I saw that and I was like, wow, great job from the contractors and the department for hitting the nail on the head on that one, so I was very impressed.
Well, like I say, hold that for another meeting or two until we get that final invoice.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything further under information? All right, seeing none, moving to action items. The first one, Joe, interior gates at the dog park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the Planning and Parks Committee at its November 19th meeting was asked to consider an expenditure of approximately $9,000 to replace the set of interior gates associated with the dog park area. Those gates that are in place or original and have been used by the dog park registrants since August of 2015. The design of those particular gates was to be rustic, rural, and for all intents and purposes, safe and function for the purposes of easy ingress, egress, and safety for the users. What we found over time is making them rustic and rural looking meant that we used a wood frame with metal fencing, and that wood frame was heavier than we anticipated and has created more issues regarding the stability of the gates, the ease of use, et cetera. More recently, they have started to damage the framework that holds them in place, and they just don't work as well as we had hoped after the four-plus years of utilization. As part of the discussion with the Planning and Parks Committee, the department did reach out to the provider of the exterior gate, a single one with the locking mechanism and combination pad, and they provided the price which is identified in the report from the committee. The committee concurred that the gates, the interior gates needed to be replaced. They did request additional bids be sought, so the action the committee took was to authorize up to roughly $8,700 of expenditure for the replacement of gates if another vendor is found that can meet the specifications at a lesser cost, obviously to utilize that. At the meeting two weeks ago, I mentioned that the committee gave us additional homework to undertake, and that was the homework, finding additional bidders for this particular project. We did contact one, another contractor, and after reviewing the specifications and visiting the dog park, they basically said that they thought the bid we had was the best bid we would get and would not provide another. It's our intent to seek a third bid, but tonight, the committee and the department are respectfully requesting a favorable vote on the recommendation, the recommendation being to replace the interior park gates at the dog park and not to exceed the amount set forth in the bid provided by the current contractor.
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion? Councilor Dodwell?
I'll make the motion that we move forward with, hopefully, this contractor, but if you feel it imperative to get another bid, we can do so. I don't know that it's imperative.
Well, the committee asked that we try to get at least three. I know Gary Cruz, our superintendent in Parks and Recreation, has been working on the third one, but again, the contractor that provided the input said that it's a real specialty project type and that the bid we got is a very good bid, so he wouldn't even offer to match it or submit something other than, thank you, but no thank you.
Okay, we have a second from Councilwoman McCune. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilman Bertolino?
Yeah, just a quick one, this is, excuse my ignorance, Joe, but this is under $10,000. Why is it even before the council?
Well, in this particular instance, with Sam, excuse me, Mr. Anslum, our city administrator being new, we didn't want to necessarily have him signing for an improvement in the dog park at that amount so soon, so we believed as the department staff it'd be appropriate to bring it through the process.
Councilor Stevens?
So, for the 2019 budget, for the line item for this, it says that original was $60,000 and then the year-end estimate was $60,000, so we're like right there. Does that include this purchase, or would this go above that?
This would go above it at this stage, so we'll hold off the next three and a half weeks and authorize the contract after the first of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Remy?
Do we have a date for when we're going to have the event for this park? When we're at the naming of the park with the...
Gary Cruz, Kathy Arnett have been working with Captain, one of the captains over at Metro West, and Mike Teeman, the deputy chief. They've worked out all the arrangements for the signage, and that'll be presented to the committee and then to City Council with recommendation from the committee, but it looks like it's moving forward. I guess what I say, Councilmember Remy is, like everything, it'll probably be after the first of the year when we get through the holidays, but there has been a lot of progress made. And the good news is too, that the fire district has agreed to fund the signage. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, and I just noticed we have Scout Troop 456 with us this evening. Thank you for joining us. What we're doing now is our work session, so this goes before the council where we just go through different issues and sometimes motions happen and so forth, not quite as formal as the meeting, but that's what you're going to see for the next few minutes. So, thanks for being here, guys, appreciate it. Joe, I'm sorry, Sam, cancellation of the Monday, December 23rd, 2019 meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you. Good evening to you, councilmembers. In reviewing last year's work session agenda, at this time, this item appeared on the 2018 agenda to discuss the cancellation of our second meeting in December, so I would, in accordance with past practice, present this to you for discussion and consideration.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yeah, I appreciate that you bring this up here because that meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 23rd, and I imagine that's going to be very difficult for people to attend the meeting being right around the holidays, so I'm happy to make a motion if you need one to cancel this meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to cancel the December 23rd, 2019 meeting, seconded by council meeting, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving next to an executive session, we would need a motion to do that. Councilmember McCune, seconded by Councilmember Bartoni, and this needs to be a roll call vote. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Sterninger, please call the roll as to proceeding into executive session.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember McCune.
Yes.
Councilmember Bo.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Remy.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Grogg Nani.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to go into an executive session, and then when that is concluded, we will return to the chambers to finish the work session before we go into the main meeting.
Yeah.
Is it called?
How would you say you did?
You'll probably not, hey Gus, you wanna, since the, they're like up against the corner, do you wanna stand in front of them? Okay. So, just me, Jackson, when he says present the colors, you're still keeping it upright, cause it's the city flag. So, I'm gonna do this. Yep, Jackson.
Do me a favor, stand in front, next thing, you guys just come back over here, nope, you just go back over here.
So, I'll say color guard present the colors, Chris hold it at an angle, then when I say post the colors, you guys will put it in your stand, then I'll say dismiss, you guys walk straight down to the corner.
So, you guys say color guard, post the colors?
Were we saying pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Yes, after pledge of allegiance.
A minute.
Or is, that's four.
You're gonna post the colors, and then you're gonna do the pledge of allegiance, correct?
No.
Nope, what are you doing?
So, you, nope, they'll get up here, I'll say present the colors, first they'll do that in an angle, then I'll say, I'll do pledge of allegiance, then I'll say post the colors, we'll put it in their stand, and then I'll say dismiss, and you guys walk straight down to the opposite corner, not of the one you showed.
Does anybody here see me? So, when you guys are done, we just walk down. So, let's do it one more time, just one more, let's do one more run.
Okay. So, let's, you can do it. There was anything left for all of you to scan.
That's it.
If it's just worth it, you guys enough.
Cause all I need is more.
Otherwise, that's like rude.
I know, right?
I think there are a lot.
Some of this is very. It's a little weird process.
Okay, council members, we are now back into open session, there being nothing under miscellaneous for the work session, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session. May have a councilor McCutcheon, second by council member McCune, non-debatable, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So, we are adjourned from the work session, and we'll start the main meeting at seven o'clock, thank you.
Can you make it warmer in there?
Uh, yes, I think I can. Certainly okay. We can do it.
Turn up the ease.
Yep. What do you, no, I just worked for this because of the, uh. Okay.
Just point, a minute.
Just point, what am I?
Yeah. Okay. No, makes sense.
Okay, good evening, I would like to call to order the meeting for the city council for the city of Wildwood for Monday, December 9, 2019. Mr. Malyer, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Bow. Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Brost.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Nani.
Here.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you in the audience for being with us this evening, it's good to see you. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device that is on, if you would please turn it to silent while we are in our meeting, we would appreciate it. And we are honored this evening to have Boy Scout Troop 677 with us to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. And so for those of you that are comfortably able, actually, we'll just turn it over to them and let us tell, they'll let, they'll tell us when we need to stand, so. Gentlemen?
Color guard, that's it, audience, please rise. Color guard, man. Please pick right hand up. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, post colors. Color guard, dismiss.
And thank you again for doing that. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the November 25th, 2019 work session and regular agenda. There are no comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, made by Councilmember Farmer, seconded by Councilwoman McCutcheon. Any discussion on the motion? See no discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving next into public participation, this is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and your ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation. And I will let you know when that time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official that you would like to respond. That official will make note of it and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting. And we may also post any responses on the city council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. This means that interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited. And I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. First speaker card, please.
Diane Hudson, Ward 1.
Good evening, I hope you guys had a good party. Oh, can you hear me? My name is Diane Hudson, I live at 1-806-8-BABBLER-WOODS-RIDE. I want to thank the council members and Mayor Boland for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I want to thank the Wildwood Department of Planning and the Planning and Zoning Commissioners for assisting in the discovery. I'm going to speak tonight on PZ 15-17. Uh, I want to thank them for assisting in the discovery of the lake water conditions which are feeding the waterfall at Babler Farms LLC. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me fully inform you of the status. What the testing results have revealed is the presence of chemistry in the lake that supports a high level of algal growth. The breakdown of the algae, when it dies, releases microcystin toxin which was found in the lake. Inhalation of these toxins are dangerous and present a public health concern. The levels measured by the city's consultant indicates that by Missouri state public safety standards, this lake is impaired. The water quality experts from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources have expressed concern that the use of this lake as a water source for the waterfall in question shouldn't be used unless it's remediated. Even though there were limited samples taken and not allowed to be taken at depth, the results have demonstrated a potential impact on human health and safety. Planning and zoning has recommended treatment of the lake water before it is used in the waterfall, and for this, David and I are very grateful. State and county agencies contacted agree that the use of the water from this impaired lake should come with treatment and standards for the protection of public health. And we really appreciate Wildwood taking this seriously, getting the testing done. And all the indications showed that there was, was a problem. And so Missouri Department of Natural Resources concluded that that was the case. Thank you. And please put my comments in the record.
Thank you, next speaker card, please.
Jean Fedvig, Ward 4.
Hello, um, could I put this on? Okay, alright, that's good enough. Thank you, Jean Fedvig, 16709 Clayton Road, Wildwood, Missouri 63011, Ward 4. I wanted to make a comment about the receiving file tonight, you have tonight before you for PZ 15-17. Early in the time that the city was incorporated, not long after that, the city commissioned a company URFs to do a historical background study and report on Strecker Road properties. This was followed by the work that Mundell Engineering did, they did the testing on those properties. And in 2010, the city commissioned Dr. Peter De... Dr. Peter DeFur to study and report on the toxicology of those sites. So, as a city, this wasn't just, you know, a person or some outside organization, it was you guys. As a city, we learned our questions and the unknowns were confirmed. All of this was done in defense of the City of Wildwood and for public health. So that's what's really important, to defend the City of Wildwood and public health. With regards to PZ 15-17, we learned from testing, we have an impaired water body according to the MDNR standards, and that's evidenced by this chart here. The Planning and Zoning Commission understands that, and they required treatment. Toxic algae blooms and human health effects are a new area of scientific investigation. You have proof, right here, that there is a problem. Algae growth is a sign of a problem. Anyone in the medical field knows that. I thank the ones who are listening. Treatment is required. When you have it treated, you have to have verification, because if you don't do, if you do treatment with no verification, you don't have information, and you'll end up not, you will not be successful like we were on the St. Recker Road properties. You have the luxury of being at the front of this process. You have the opportunity to do the right thing. Those of you who are here and are familiar with St. Recker Road can only have that knowledge applied to this site. Again, this is a new science, but it's something that doesn't go away. And if you read the information on the toxic effects on a human being, it, it doesn't go away. Once it gets in your lungs, it's there. We don't want anyone to be exposed to this. I know you certainly don't want to vote for something that you're not fully in control of. So again, in defense of the city, and in this, for the sake of public health, we got to make sure that we don't use the public as human guinea pigs. We have to find out all the science on this and be able to verify whether it's safe or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Justin Kemner.
Hello. Thank you for your time. My name is Justin Kemner, 16595 Birch Forest, Ward 5. I want to talk to you tonight about budget restrictions. I live at the end of Birch Forest, and it is called Birch Forest Terminus, I believe. I've been working with Deborah. It's PZ 12, 12-13. That was close. So I've been working with the Planning and Zoning Commission for about 18 months now to fix the grading that is next to my house for the official and virtual new development at Village of Brightleaf. It was just brought to my attention about two weeks ago that there was no funding in the budget, even though we've been going through these plannings. Everything's been approved with the neighbors and worked with Ms. McCutcheon for the past few months to get something approved. And now the budget is being pushed off to 2021. So I'm asking for you guys to reconsider and maybe take another look at it to see where we can find some funding to finally fix this problem. It's been going on for 18 months, and I believe that if you push it out to 2021, it will never happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
That was the last speaker card.
Okay, thank you. And thanks to those of you who came to speak this evening. Moving next to mayor appointments and announcements, we have announcements and appointments. We have one appointment to an alternate position on our Historic Preservation Commission. Appointing Ms. Debbie Cordernick, who's with us this evening, from Ward 6, for the unexpired term ending 2021. This is brought about by virtue of moving one of the former alternates to a permanent position. Are there any questions? I'm happy to answer them, and she is here. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve Debbie to the HPC. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second from Ward 6? Made by Councilmember Bowe. Alright, any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you, and congratulations, Debbie, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Right, moving next to public hearings, we have two. The first, Miller House. Mr. Marmelier, would you please read the item?
A response to a communication from Andrea Miller, the Miller House, 2612 East Avenue, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040, which is dated October 29, 2019, regarding St. Louis County's P.C. 112-89 Cliff Car, Cliff Rough Car, amended C-8 Plan Commercial District, Town Center, Workplace District, south of Manchester Road, east side of East Avenue, street address 2612 East Avenue, locator number 24B 510441, that provides a recommendation on requested modifications to the existing site-specific governing ordinance to allow the permitted uses authorized by it to include stores and shops for retail purposes to be in conjunction with the existing coffee shops, lounge bar, event space, and a shared use office concept.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, the Planning and Zoning Commission has provided for your consideration tonight a report with recommendation regarding an additional set of permitted uses being requested for the property that now houses Miller House. The property is part of Town Center, was originally zoned C-8 Plan Commercial District by St. Louis County, and subsequently, that C-8 Plan Commercial District has been amended by the City of Wildwood. Recent activity, beginning in 2018, included the discussion of the Miller House and all of its permitted uses or components. At that time, there were concerns about the components, the extent of them, and potential impacts on a growing residential pattern in its vicinity. The City Council responded to Ms. Miller's request and authorized a list of permitted uses, specifically those requested as part of the use of the existing building. The C-8 Plan Commercial District and its regulations allow for that specific kind of review and identification of activities. It's all premised on a plan and a concept. Therefore, the Planning and Zoning Commission noted in its consideration of this request that it was not so much that specialty retail stores and shops was precluded or prohibited, it was just not something that was sought initially when this first request, the amendment in 2018, was submitted. The property started in 1989 as retail, and it has functioned as a retail location for that period of time, except during vacancies and other activities. The Town Center Regulating Plan identifies the property as workplace, and as workplace, specialty retail stores and shops are allowed. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, at its meeting unanimously, supported adding this set of retail uses to the existing ordinance to accommodate the relocation of another Town Center business to this site. Mr. Mayor, after public comment, the Department of Planning will be available to address any comments or questions regarding the Commission's consideration and action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any speaker cards, Mr. Marmelier?
Andrea Miller, Ward 6.
Andrea Miller, 4027 Princeton Ridge Drive, Ward 6. So I obviously am here for the first reading of Bill 2535. I actually would like to request a second reading this evening, just with the holiday schedule coming up and at the council meeting, I believe, the next one would be in January. The subtenant that we are working with, their lease actually expires at the end of this year, so, at their current location. So we would like to respectfully request a second reading this evening. I will be here tonight if there are any questions that you would like to direct towards me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
No, sir.
Joe?
And the department would like to provide an explanation. It is unusual to have a public hearing plus the introduction of the bill on the same night, and even, let's say, a little more unusual to request a second reading. The department does support the second reading, and the rationales for that support, again, relate to the fact that the Workplace District accommodates specialty retail stores and shops. Secondly, the Planning and Zoning Commission was very careful in limiting any improvements or additional improvements on the site, so nothing will change with the exterior of the building in terms of additional parking or any other improvements of that like kind. So that indicates, from the perspective of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that this use can be incorporated into the existing building, property, and area with little or no impact. The other business would have to, for all intents and purposes, ignore the law and relocate into the building while the process continues, or have to close temporarily to accommodate the process of the introduction of the bill and then the second reading at a future date in January. So therefore, with the, with the acknowledgement of our city administrator and city attorney, the department has prepared the bill and placed it on the agenda tonight for consideration. And again, the department supports consideration of a second reading on this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? Councilmember Dodwell?
I would just ask that the rest of the council please support a second reading. I think Ms. Miller has done a great job of being a female entrepreneur here in the City of Wildwood, and I would like to ensure that we can support her continued growth and also support that of a business that may have moved out of our city boundaries. And so hopefully, we can get to a second reading later this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember McCutcheon?
What kind of surrounding resident input have you had?
At the public hearing, we did not have one, anyone speaking in opposition, or quite frankly, we had no speakers at the, at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we did the required 1,500-foot radius from the property boundaries of the subject site. So we sent out quite a few notices about the consideration of the request and the Planning and Zoning Commission's intent to act. We also did a mailing for tonight's public hearing as well.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Alright, next item, the proposed 2020 municipal budget. Mr. Anson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. City Charter requires that we have a public hearing to adopt the 2020 municipal budget. We need to have this public hearing prior to the final passage of the budget. So we prepared for your information, as well as the public's, the summary of the budget for next fiscal year. I would just like to make a couple of comments before we open it up to residents or questions from council members. First and foremost, the 2020 municipal budget as proposed is balanced, with planned expenditures totaling just over $17 million, in addition to revenues that are estimated at $17.2 million for next fiscal year. We have an available fund balance in the general fund of roughly $15.5 million, of which $2.8 million is avail, or restricted for expenditure emergencies, and another $1.1 million is restricted for public safety expenditures. And included in the 2020 budget are capital improvements totaling roughly $5.7 million. One item of note, if you go through the budget comparing this year to next year, as well as previous years, we have reinstituted the Road and Bridge Fund. Dedicated revenues come from two streams for the Road and Bridge Fund. Those include Road and Bridge taxes that are provided by St. Louis County, as well as motor fuel sales taxes. So those two have certain restrictions on what can be spent using those resources. And in effort to provide as transparent a budget as we can, we went ahead and reinstituted the Road and Bridge Fund, moved the expenditures associated with operations and maintenance of roads and bridges out of Public Works and into the Road and Bridge Fund. So if you look through the budget, you'll see roughly 59% reduction in Public Works budget. That's not because they're doing less work, it's just we moved those dollars from one bucket to the other. We'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time regarding that. But I would also note, in regard to 2020 budget personnel costs, including salary employees, salaries and employee benefits, represent roughly 29.2% of the overall budgeting expenditures for 2020. That is consistent with Wildwood's practice of providing as minimal staff as we can. Obviously, with $17 million budget and a lot of parks, that work is outsourced to private companies, but staff's role is mainly managing those contracts and overseeing the, the practice of spending those dollars. But 29.2% of a budget for personnel is significantly low, when other cities spend, you know, over at least two-thirds, if not three-fourths of their budget on personnel. A couple of operating highlights. The Police Services Agreement for 2020 is based on the same level of police as in 2019, which includes 36 uniformed police officers, one captain, one lieutenant, one sergeant, and one office administrator, in addition to court protection and security. The contract, which is a separate item this evening, increases roughly 1.7% over the current fiscal year. But many of the expenditures that are allocated to the police department are also financed with a one-half cent public safety sales tax that was passed by the St. Louis County voters in 2017. So we have included that information in our budget as well for the, I believe, third year. And then finally of note, we do have money in the budget next fiscal year for a review and discussion regarding the five-year strategic goals and objectives. And my goal is to have that conversation, a facilitated conversation, early next year so that we can begin to set our 2020 to 2024 goals. And with that, I will yield the floor.
Thank you. So this was on our agenda later for debate and discussion, but at this point, are there any questions for the city administrator? Councilmember McCune?
I don't know if this is the right time, since it's a public hearing, and I believe that one of the residents came up to the podium requesting a budget item be put on next year's.
That would be when we discuss it, later in the agenda?
So there is a possibility to open that up, because we're going to approve it for this gentleman to maybe have a roundtable, is that a question?
Correct. You can do it. You will have that opportunity.
Thank you.
Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Anson, for that description. Alright, moving into legislation, we have the first of our second reading is Bill 2528. You may recall from our last meeting that Bills 2528, 2529, and 2530 all relate to the same item. If there's no objection from the council, I would propose, relative to expediting the council's meeting, that those three bills be handled en masse. Is there any objection to handling the bills en masse? Seeing none, Mr. Marmelier, would you please read Bill 2528, Bill 2529, and Bill 2530?
Can we get a vote for the second reading?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Alright, so is there a motion for the second reading of Bill 2528, 2529, and 2530? Made by Councilmember McCune, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you, Mr. Marmelier. Now, please read Bills 2528, 2529, and 2530.
Bill 2528, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, granting approval of a replacement deposit agreement for plat 1 of the Main Street Crossing subdivision plat book 365, page 323 to 327, a 35-lot portion of an overall 28-acre residential development that is located in the east half of the southwest quarter of Section 1 and the east half of southeast quarter of Section 2, Township 44 North, Range 3 East. the east half of southeast quarter of Section 2, Township 44 North, Range 3 East. City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the east side of State Route 109, on the north and south sides of Main Street, and for the purposes of allowing the developer additional time to complete required improvements associated with the project. Bill 2529, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, granting approval of a replacement deposit agreement for Plat 2 of the Main Street Crossing subdivision Plat Book 366, pages 41 to 43, a 35-lot portion of an overall 28-acre residential development that is located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 1 and the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 2, Township 44 North, Range 3 East. City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the east side of State Route 109, on the north and south sides of Main Street, for the purposes of allowing the developer additional time to complete required improvement associated with the project. Bill 2530, in ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, granting approval of a replacement deposit agreement for Plat 3 of the Main Street Crossing subdivision Plat Book 366, pages 290 to 293, a 34-lot portion of an overall 28-acre residential development that is located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 1 and the east half of southeast quarter of Section 2, Township 44 North, Range 3 East. City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the east side of State Route 109, on the north and south sides of Main Street, for the purposes of allowing the developer additional time to complete required improvements associated with the project.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to any of these three bills?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there have been no changes to the bills since their introduction. The department's available, though, to answer any questions or respond to comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Joe, or any comments from any member of the council? Okay, so we will need to, I'm sorry, Councilmember McCutcheon? I'm sorry? That's all right. That's okay, we'll get there. Any questions or comments, questions for Joe or comments on Bills 2528, 2529, or 2530? All right, seeing none, so we will need to do a roll call separately for each one. Ms. Darmelier, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2528.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Giratano?
Yes.
Councilmember Worther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Okay, the bill passes. Ms. Darmelier, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2529.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Giratano?
Yes.
Councilmember Worther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
The bill passes. And finally, Ms. Darmelier, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2530.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Giratano?
Yes.
Councilmember Worther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Okay, that bill passes as well. Moving next to Bill 2531, it's before the council for final passage, and it concerns all wards, is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? May be councilmember Greg Noni, seconded by councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposed, councilmember Worther. Is there any other opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Darmelier, please read Bill 2531.
Bill 2531, an ordinance adopting the municipal budget and capital improvement program for the city of Wildwood for fiscal year 2020.
Okay, thank you. Bill 2531 is on the floor for discussion. Is there any discussion? Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah, I'd like to address Justin's comments. We're talking about the turnaround at the end of Birch Forest Drive. The turnaround came into play because of the emergency access that was required by PZ 1213. The radius of that area does not allow for even trucks to turn around. They have to back down the street, which causes a safety issue. They have been promised many times that the funding and the project was moving ahead. The land, the area that Fisher and Frictl is supposed to landscape can't be done until the turnaround is put in. Therefore, there is no appropriate landscaping, and a better view than there would be if there was no landscaping. That whole east side of the project from Fisher and Frictl have pretty much been landscaped, except for the Birch Forest turnaround. But again, it's a safety issue, there's not enough radius for trucks, the trucks are backing down the street. Recently, one of the branches of a couple of trees were knocked down while the trucks were backing down the street. That particular area was designated as emergency access only. We have had motorists drive through that access point multiple times. So even they got out, moved the barrier, and drove through, got back out of their car, moved the barrier, and kept going. So I know we have an extensive budget, I know we're trying to keep this budget balanced, but I think the safety and the promise and all the issues surrounding that area, I think we really should find $75,000 within this budget in order to go ahead and complete the turnaround. To have them wait until 2021 is going to put a real burden on the residents at the end of that street. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to amend the budget?
I do. Still moved.
Moving that item from 2021 to 2020?
2020, yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion, seconded by councilmember Bertolino? And relative to the source of that funding, do you have an opinion on anything in that regard that you want to share with the council?
I was wondering if it could maybe come out of public safety, or the Road and Bridge Fund, or if we do some other budget adjustments that could possibly come from there.
Okay, so we'll, councilmember McKeon?
I didn't know if you saw me, so...
I did, that's all right.
I have a recommendation on the budget, and I want to comment with Niles, and maybe you can comment. There's $75,000 budgeted for 2020 for the Etherington Road reconstruction and the final design, it's kind of projected more for 2022. Can we swap that $75,000 for next year with the Birch Forest, which was proposed for 2021? So it's an even swap?
Without objection, we'll get an answer from our Director of Public Works, Rick Brown. Mr. Brown?
Certainly, that could be done, if that's the council's desire, that project would then be delayed by a year effectively.
I think that would be, it wouldn't...
You could amend the motion to that effect if you would like, councilmember McKeon, that those would, that would be the source of the funds of councilmember McCutcheon's motion.
Yeah, I would like to make the amendment, and so that the project's not delayed.
Is there a second? Councilmember McCutcheon? All right, so now the amendment is on the source of the funds, and that is to switch the Etherington Road, what was that again, just for clarification?
Do you want the line number?
That would be good.
Give me one second.
Councilmember Giratano?
Yeah.
So this is on the amendment, the source of the funds, not on whether the switch is made, it's on the source of the funds. Councilmember Giratano?
Yeah, and I appreciate that you and councilmember Stevens are identifying this particular item here, the $75,000 from the Etherington Road, but I'm going to object to that, because the people of Ward 8 that live on Etherington Road have been asking for this improvement for some time. We have a resident that lives right at the very end, second house from the end on the right side, who has flooding down her driveway, all the debris is washing down the driveway, and I hear often from her, "When is this going to get fixed? When is this going to get fixed?" We have a safety issue because people are on that road, and they're walking, they're running, they're jogging, there's no safe place. In fact, it ties in with another issue that I just heard from a resident, who's watching this meeting right now, I know he watches this meeting, who said, "That road right now is not wide enough to support traffic the way it is today with two cars going in opposite directions." And so this improvement that we have been planning on, which we invited the Ward 8 people to come here to City Hall for a session to look at the plans, I just hate to go back and have to tell them that I tried really hard to keep this project for 2020, but unfortunately it was pushed to 2021. So unfortunately, I would oppose to that. We've got the design work ready to go, and I know we want to help the resident there, but this one here hits home here, and I have to speak in favor, in defense of the Ward 8 folks, because of what I've heard over the years. So I'm pleading for those Ward 8 residents that leave on Etherington Road, that while I do appreciate that you found this item on the budget, I don't know if you found it tonight or what, I would seek that you try to find something else to affect. The Ward 8 folks have already sacrificed enough, they shouldn't give up this project in Ward 8, and we've got other things that need to be done. We're dealing with a lot of traffic and construction, they deserve to get it fixed.
Councilmember Bartoni, did I see your hand?
So, thank you, so...
And this is on the source of the change, if it is made, not on the change itself?
Well, and if it's not, just let me know, and I can...
That's okay, go ahead.
...or whatever like that, but, you know, if we're taking money from one place, I doubt if this Etherington Road was just, we had extra $75,000, and let's put it someplace. So there was probably plenty of thought going into this project and putting this money towards this, and it wasn't anything new, but I guess my question for whether it's, well, for whoever you guys can figure that out, and let me know who it should be directed to, but is this on 2021's plan currently, because Brightleaf will pretty much be finished at that time? I mean, would it be smarter to wait to finish this? I mean, I'm sure that this needs to be done, but it would be smarter to wait until this project's done, because these trucks are going to continue to come. And was that the plan, like, let's get this done, that way we don't have a new terminus and then trucks driving over it?
Joe, would you or Rick like to answer that?
Well, in terms of the villages at Brightleaf, that particular area, which I'll describe as the east half of the overall project location, is the, was the first phase of the development, so it has been under construction now for almost two years. I suspect that they will complete that area in 2020. They've had some great success there, selling the homes on those particular lots, and there's only, I believe, a few left on this particular street where the turnaround is being proposed. So it probably will be completed by 2020, at least in terms of that street and that particular village.
Okay, and that answers my question, but I'm just, I'm not too sure if this is the time to be robbing one person who's, think, worked hard to get this, some project done for another project, and I'm, no disrespect intended, I'm sure that this does need to be done, and I would, the only thing I would object to what you said is that if it goes to 2021, it'll be forgotten. That doesn't happen, because you got two council people, they don't forget, so they're going to get it done for you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Rick, on the Etherington Road reconstruction, we have final design 2020, right-of-way 2022, and then construction 2024. Would it delay the project to have the final design, like, is there any way to tighten it up and go 2021, 2022, and then even move up the construction to 2023? Like, is it possible to do it in a three-year span?
I would say it's possible, certainly if we don't proceed with design, next year we'll have to wait one year until we finish the design before we know, you know, what the full scope of the work is and what the construction cost is of the project, so that's, that effort would be delayed in that sense a year.
So like, if it, if it went to 2021 for the final design, and then the right-of-way moved to 2023, if that had to get, if that had to go that way out, could we still be on budget for the construction, which is in 2024 currently on the budget? So nothing, construction, what people see and feel and want would not necessarily change years, could we still get it done in 2024 if we moved the money around?
Potentially. I think the one thing I would point out is, we had looked at that improvement as a potential project, where we might build it to get federal funding on it, so from that standpoint, we did leave it further out in the program, hoping that at some point, if we got federal funding, we might be able to move it up even. So the sooner we can get the design solidified earlier, we could probably go for federal funding, that kind of thing.
So, but would that delay, would it delay construction, though? I mean, for 2024, to move it to 2021? Like, that's my question, because I, I agree with councilmember Giratano, I don't want to delay construction, but if the construction's not for another four years, are we really delaying anything just by moving the design from one year to the next? Or can we move it up in 2021 and just plan on doing it at the first of the year of 2021, and you still got the whole year, you know, to go?
It's possible we could keep the progress. I will say that we have found out on these projects, similar to this, that the right-of-way acquisition is a multi-year process, and utility relocations add to the timeframe, so it does challenge us to get the, get those aspects of the project completed in a short timeframe. So from the department's perspective, it'd be better to continue the progress next year if we're going to meet the 2024 deadline, frankly.
Okay, but don't you still, wouldn't you still have two years for the right-of-way? You have $150,000 for 2022, you would still have '22 and '23 for the right-of-way and construction in 2024. Like, nothing there would change, would it? I don't want to take money away from, or stop Etherington Road at all, but, you know, the resident showed up here, he wants it done, if we can do it, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't.
Again, from the department's perspective, it'd be better to maintain the funding in next year, so that we have plenty of time to meet that deadline. Certainly, I couldn't rule out that we could get it done in 2024, but there's a lot of work to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Remy?
I just have four questions. Rick, could you just stay? I'm curious, a couple things, so I'll just give you all the questions, and you can answer them. To the department, triage Etherington ahead of Brightleaf for a reason. Will the projects take more than 12 months, either of them? Can we allocate a percentage of the $75,000 to allow for both projects to occur without delaying, if they're going to be over a 12 month, more than a 12-month period? And then finally, what would be the, what would be your recommendation or the city administration's, minister's recommendation for how to pull this money if we needed to address both?
You may have to repeat those slightly for me, but as far as the Etherington project, it has been on the capital improvements budget now for a couple of years. We are working on it currently, we had the public meeting earlier this year. The Birch Forest project officially was added, is being added to the program now, it's not currently on our program. We have never identified a specific improvement to fund that work, so, has it showed up in 2021, it's the first time it's officially been shown as a separate project.
Okay.
What else did you have questions?
Can you allocate, can you allocate a percentage of the $75,000 to allow for designing for one and still do a portion of that while doing in the next budget cycle the remainder?
Well, I think, and Joe may want to speak to this, Joe and I had had some discussions earlier regarding this improvement, the Birch Forest turnaround, and effectively, our thought was, we don't have the easements in hand yet for that project. The design is nearly complete, and it's moved along quite well, but we do have to acquire easements. I think the thought is, if we could get the easements in hand from the developer and get them secured, and at the same time finish up the plans, it is feasible that mid-year there could be an opportunity to reevaluate the program, and maybe something does drop off the plate at that time, and then Birch Forest could be added on. Joe, would you like to speak more to that, or? All right, thank you.
City Administrator Ansem, do you have any further response to councilmember Remy's question?
Yes, just to answer the last question, in terms of potential alternative sources of funding, we have reserves in both the general fund and in the capital improvement sales tax fund, to the tune of roughly $11 million in the general fund that can be used really for any purpose that council deems appropriate, and in the capital improvement sales taxes, it's about a little over $1 million. We spent down a lot of the reserves this fiscal year. I would only caution, in terms of those two potential funding sources, there are good uses of one-time projects, which I would see the Birch Forest turnaround or terminus or terminus project as being a general one-time use of those funds. So I think that would be an appropriate use for, for those reserves. But you don't want to use reserve funds for ongoing operational expenses. And so if the ongoing maintenance or, you know, needs of the particular project are small, then I, I would feel comfortable suggesting or recommending that we just use reserves. But to Director Brown and Director Vunich's point, there is going to be some work that needs to be done to even get to the point where we have the authority to go on to the property and make those improvements. So I would recommend we let that process play out, and then perhaps at mid-year, you know, if there's sufficient funding, and which there will be, I would make the recommendation at that time to either pull the funds from our general fund fund balance or from the capital improvement sales tax reserves.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes, so the, the reason why I think this is sort of a complicated emotional issue is just to, just to reiterate, we're hearing two public safety concerns, and they're competing for dollars. And Councilmember Bartoni and I have already been in this situation last year, and also Ward Four. We had requested sidewalk improvements, crossing light improvements, and we just didn't have the, the money in the budget, and we had a lot of really upset residents that were concerned about safety. And it's on the budget for this year, thank goodness. So I've, unfortunately, been in the position where I've had to tell someone to wait. And what I would like to do is find a compromise. So my question was largely answered by Councilmember Remy when he posed it to you, which is, if we don't take it from the Etherington Road project, where would you recommend we get it from? And it sounds like the one-time use of the reserve makes a lot of sense. And so maybe that's what we need to do. And I will say, from our experience with the, the sidewalk extension, is that it, it does take a long time to, to get the, the easements. And that was part of what slowed our project down. And so if it's anything like what we've experienced with Strucker, I would think that we would be behind schedule on, on the Etheringtons. So I don't like dipping into the balance, but I don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul over public safety issues, and I'm uncomfortable with that. So I would support that, rather than taking, taking money from, from the other process. Unless, does Public Works have another line item that it could come from? And please do not say the Strucker Road improvements. Don't, don't, don't say that.
I'm not aware of any, no. The difficult situation is frankly right. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul, we're taking money from one ward, perhaps moving it to another, and that's a difficult choice to make.
Councilor Garitano?
Yeah, thanks. To answer Councilmember Bartoni about, I guess, the history around this, this concern around Etherington Road goes back probably to about 2015 or so. I remember being in here, because Main Street, Main Street Crossing was being proposed, and that was a big concern of those residents that live on Etherington Road. You know, the new homes that were going to come in, the traffic that it was going to create. So the thought of trying to improve Etherington Road has gone that far back. And as was mentioned, it's been on the budget for quite a while. And there are, and I only mention a few reasons here, but those residents, I mean, they're right there. They're still waiting for Main Street to open up, and we needed to make sure that we keep that on the radar and move forward at some point with that. But Etherington Road needs help right now. It is a road that sees a lot of traffic. There's the, I, I know quite a number of situations, as I said, you know, the flooding that drains into somebody's driveway, the speeding is a problem. That road is not built right now to handle the extra traffic and the speeding that's there. The captain can tell you, we have complaints that come from there quite regularly on Etherington Road. The safety is a concern of the pedestrians, because you know what? We have people that live now there in that community. They moved here to Wildwood for a walkable community. They don't have sidewalks there. So they don't have a way to get there. Plus, we have that beautiful trail along 100 that we tell everybody to go and use it, because we have that nice new bridge that we put there recently. But in order to get to it, they have to walk down Etherington Road. So I've been telling them, we're going to get you your sidewalks. All these efforts. So again, we've been working with these residents to try to get this done. And so this amendment here that we have in front of us, to propose to shift money out of the Etherington Road, I am adamantly opposed to it, and I speak again in defense of these Ward Eight residents that live there.
Councilmember Werther?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the back and forth between the various wards on their various projects. There's one item in here, Mr. Brown, the top page 50 on the budget, below the details of the various items, which is, happens to be for $75,000, the Emerald Ash Borer and Ash Tree Program. I know, we've had a lot of discussion about that over time. Would you mind talking a little bit about that, about what was planned for next year, or is this simply $75,000 for, $75,000 for tree replacement?
So the, the issue on the floor is whether to swap...
And I'm trying to find funds in another place to, to address that very question.
Right. So if it fails, I think your question would be in order. But, but if we go down the road of, of trying to figure out other things to swap, with something we're trying to discuss to swap now, we're gonna, I think we're gonna have a lot of confusion. So I would suggest that we, we handle the one that's on the floor at the moment, the amendment, and if that fails, then any amendment about the tree issue would be in order. But with that said, go ahead and answer his question, Rick, and then we'll go back to the amendment.
Yes, that, you're correct. That's the money that is earmarked for the Emerald Ash Borer to remove and replace or treat ash trees for next year, for 2020.
How many trees were we talking about?
We really haven't identified that specifically. We're planning on having that back to, and then Public Works early next year, with a recommendation with a specific program that could potentially then come to City Council.
At which a dollar, known dollar amount would come forward at that time?
Correct. Obviously, we'd be working towards staying within that budget of $75,000.
Thank you.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to switch, well, let me re, Councilmember McCutcheon?
Um, so I just want to clear up a couple of things. So this has been an ongoing issue with Ward Five at the end of Birch Forest. It was my understanding that Fisher and Frictal donated the land for this turnaround to be established on. And I was under the impression that we had all the easements that we needed to have, and that our engineering drawings were approved. So when you start talking about easements not being met, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
The Department of Planning and the Department of Public Works did reach out to Fisher Frictal. They have agreed to grant an easement in the common ground area. Fisher Frictal prepared an easement agreement between it, the homeowners association, so to speak, and the city of Wildwood. There was review of the easement document, comments were made, and Mr. Young and the attorney representing the developer are trying to finalize that easement agreement. In principle, we do have an agreement. The intent is not to renege on that agreement. We're just trying to work through the final items associated with it. Secondly, the plan has been developed for the Birch Forest Drive turnaround. There are some comments that are outstanding that Rick and I have put together in a letter. The letter has not yet been finalized due to other priorities, quite frankly. I do want to note that there is a temporary turnaround at that location. That turnaround's been there since that street was first developed. It's not changed. There is a need to address that situation. That situation was temporary, as described by the turnaround on the plans that approved it. But again, there is a turnaround at that location at this time.
Thank you for that, but I, I would note that the turnaround that is there at this point in time is not large enough for the trucks to turn around in. And we have had trucks backing down the street, even had to have somebody come trim the tree from branches that were dangling, and then pick up the branches that were already in the street. And, and I, I also want to note that residents have been to many meetings, and you know that, because you've been there, addressing these issues. And I don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul. I understand Ward Eight residents, as well as the need for Ward Five residents, but if we can use capital funds to be able to go ahead and finish this project, I, I can see this being even a more drastic situation when we've got residents from the villages of Brightleaf then driving through what was supposed to be emergency access. But I, I do appreciate the effort and the time that you've put into this, Joe, because I know you've put a lot of time into it.
My comments aren't about what the department's done or not done. It's just more that I don't want anyone on the council dais to think that there's a situation, a situation's changed down there over the course of time. It's not. The same temporary turnaround that's been there since, let's say, 1990 is still there. The department wanted it removed and supports this project wholeheartedly. As I say, it's just taken more time than both Rick and I would have liked. Doesn't mean that it's not going to happen, certainly. But we also have been given direction to watch the budget lines across the board in capital improvements for 2020, which we did.
Okay. So council, we, we've had a lot of discussion on, this is on the amendment, whether to move from the Etherington project to the turnaround of Birch Forest. And I've got three councilors. Any, Councilmember McCune, anything new to, okay?
Can I amend my amendment, then?
You could do that. What would be your amendment?
I, I really appreciate everybody's conversations on this, and I think just looking at this with a different lens now, I'd like to amend it, however we need to word it, is to maybe look at it the mid-year, as our city administrator recommended. At this point, since, I think you made a good point, Joe, about your, your residence too, but I think that that's the compromise here, that we're not wiping it off for next year, but it's something that we can reevaluate in six months, since a lot of the plans are done. So I think that I would like to amend it to say that we reevaluate this in six months at the mid-year review of what the city administrator recommended. And I would like a second, if anybody would help me.
So we have a second, and I'm going to treat that as a motion to postpone this specific issue, the amendment of the budget to the mid-year, the date on which the council assesses its mid-year budget issues. So it'll be a motion to postpone, which trumps both the amendment and the main motion. So the discussion is on the motion to postpone. Councilmember Remy, you're on the list, motion to postpone. You want to discuss, say anything about that?
I have a second.
Okay. Councilmember Edens, anything on the motion to postpone?
I think it's out of order now. It was just a clarification question regarding precedent and funding. So for example, can I?
If this fails, then it would be in order.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is to postpone. Roll call vote on the motion to postpone, please. And just for the council's benefit, if this passes, then this issue will not be discussed further until, the, the issue being the funding and the source of the funding for the Birch Forest turnaround, until the council addresses the, the mid-year budget issues. Roll call vote on the motion to postpone.
Councilmember Bertolino?
No.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
No.
Councilmember Edens?
So the, the motion to postpone, if we vote yes, well, then Crystal can make her motion the second time, correct?
No, she's made the motion to postpone, and if this passes, it ends debate on this issue. We'll go to the next item concerning the budget, if there is one.
So this will not go to mid-year review?
It would go to mid-year review.
Okay, then yes to postpone.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Hi.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
No.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McCune?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
The motion to postpone passes.
A point of order.
What is your point of order?
Sorry, I missed, I, I actually was voting and seconded her motion. You made the motion to postpone, which is actually not her direct motion.
No, I can't make a motion.
I understand.
But her, her motion, her motion to have this decided or reviewed at the, the council meeting, where the council will be looking at its mid-year review, I take it, took as a motion to postpone, because it's moving that to that point, and the city attorney agreed with that.
Is that, is that what you were hoping to do?
If that's the objective, and gets there, if you agree...
If that's, if that's the same thing, then I'll vote, then I'll vote yes. But the problem is that, that wasn't delineated by the, the council member.
I stated that before it was mentioned, or before, I'm sorry, I stated that before the council voted.
Once again, I don't believe that was delineated by the council member who made the motion, so I just want to make sure that we are all clear. If this is what you agree to, I'll second that, and I will vote yes to that.
Okay, have you completed the roll call? Yes, so...
Just one second, just one second.
Should I change Remy's vote to yes, then?
Yes.
Okay. And have you roll called the full council? Yes.
Okay, so the motion to postpone carries. Councilmember McCutcheon?
Um, yeah, so I want a clarification, because I thought city administrator said that there was availability of fundings to come out of the capital improvements project, and that we could do that at this point and not wait until mid-year review. I thought, and then Crystal was then motioning for whatever you had said to go forward. So can you clarify, please?
So I think the city administrator did say that. My interpretation, which I believe I got an agreement from Councilmember McCune, was that the issue of the turnaround being done be evaluated without regard to the source of funding at the, the council's mid-year budget review, and therefore took it as a motion to postpone.
Can I speak, just real quick?
Sure.
So what I was referring to for clarification was, is when the city administrator had mentioned that maybe his recommendation was to postpone it at the six-month review, that the funding at that point could be evaluated, and that we could get the $75,000. I'm not comfortable if, wherever he's going to pull it, he can reevaluate where that's going to come from. But going into the reserve budget right now is not, and correct me if I'm wrong, is not a good thing at this meeting, but rather look at it in six months. So I, I agree with that approach.
So that's, and that's how I took it, and...
Okay, just so we're all on the same page, and that's what I was meaning. I'm not saying that postpone the project. I just think that, yes, that the project should be looked at at six months and should be ready to go. It's just the question of funding.
Councilmember Edens?
Still probably out of order, not sure. So I'm going to go ahead and ask it, because as I was processing this information, and Director Vunich mentioned this had been in place since the 90s and had not changed, I did realize that I live on a dead-end street with a total T-bone, and all of my fire trucks have to back up and down, and so do any delivery trucks. So then, as I was processing that information, what I realized is we, are we going to set a standard as well that we redo every dead-end street that has a delayed response time for emergency? But I, I don't know that that's, that's maybe a work session question?
That could be a work session question.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And Jill Bennett, did you want to say anything further relative to this?
Hopefully, my comments will ally some of the fears about the delay. Assuming that the easement document is finalized, that easement document will need to go to committee, then to city council for approval. Then, once the plans are approved, that plan will need to go to committee and council for approval. And that, in my opinion, may take up to two to three months, which takes us to mid-spring. And then we could go out to bid and get an actual cost for the improvement, so that when we start talking in July about the mid-year adjustments, we'll be in perfect position. Even if the money were to be allocated as part of the budget tonight, that timeframe isn't going to change, because the easement, the plan, and the bidding process all has to go through committee and council.
The other thing I would say is, just along those lines, to the extent that that process occurs more quickly than anticipated, and things fall into place, the council could, through a motion to reconsider, move this up from, and, and address it before the mid-year budget, if it chose to do that. Just for information. Councilmember Bertolino?
No.
Okay, perfect, and thank you for that information. All right. So back to the bill that's on the floor, the budget approval, 2531. It has been read twice. Councilmember Stevens?
I just, I sent an email to the council about the funding for the barbecue bash, and I still think that that's important, and that we should address that before we pass the final budget. Just like the city administrator said, you don't want to use, you know, reserves for ongoing funding measures. Currently, there's only $35,000 in the budget. The last couple of years, it has cost the city, or, last year was $50,000, was what the city had approved, and they had up that from, from an original amount. So I think it's important that we find the funding for the barbecue bash. I had made some suggestions. I don't know if anybody had looked at those, or, or thought about it themselves. I, I did another review, and I think that we could, just with a few minor changes, find the funds in the budget very easily, and to get this fully funded and ready to go. And then if the... And then, if the promoter decides to pull out later, then that would be his business. But I think that it was important for us to get it onto the calendar, and I also think it's important to find the funds now versus pulling it from reserves later. So I had some suggestions, I didn't know if I needed to go through these one at a time, or?
What we would need is a motion to amend the budget as presented in the bill. Would you like to make a motion to amend the budget?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget.
Okay, please state your motion of amendment.
So under admin miscellaneous, it's currently 5850. I would move that to 4,000. Under city clerk special events, it's $2,000, I would move that to zero and move the funds to the Barbecue Bash. Under city clerk miscellaneous, it's currently $2,000, I would move that to 1,200, which would find another 800. Last year, we spent a lot of money on postage, about $7,000 was spent on postage, because we changed recycling programs a few times and had to mail out a bunch of mailers. And so I think we could save a lot of money on postage alone. Currently, there's about, each department together has 30,100. I believe that we could take that, just knock off 5%, take that to 28,600, which would find another 1,500 for the Barbecue Bash. And then also, I know this is not as popular with the council, but I would still make the recommendation, again, that the city end its relationship, or, or, not relationship, but involvement in the ICSC through the Economic Development Program. That's about $3,000, I believe. That would bring us to about $10,000 in addition for the Barbecue Bash. And then also, I know, Mayor, you had mentioned about the food vouchers for the city events. I added those up through the expenditures last year, and there was like $5,800 in food vouchers for the art fair, Barbecue Bash, and other city events. So if we end the practice of doing the food vouchers, that would be an additional $5,800, and I believe that would get us right there to fund the Barbecue Bash fully, without having to dip into reserves or make a mid-year adjustment or anything like that. So I can go back through them if you need to, to run through them.
Yeah, if you could just, without, appreciate your, your comments relative to how you, your beliefs and the support on each one, but if you could just go through them quickly, line item and the amount you're moving for the benefit of the city administrator and the council, I think that would be helpful, since you have several of them.
Point of order, I got a clarification question.
What is your point of order?
It was mentioned that this was in the email, but I think what we're hearing now versus what was sent to the email, it sounds different.
Correct, it's different. So, yeah, I can run through them real quick. I'll just give you the?
Thank you for your point of order.
The line item and then the new amount, that will do, will that suffice?
Yeah. Do we need to make the email part of the record, since we're now getting into this?
Well, the email's incorrect, because the motion is different than the email.
So Councilmember Stevens, if you'll go ahead, please, and state in, just succinctly, the line item and the amount that it currently is stated as, and the amount you're proposing it to be to move to support Barbecue Bash?
Admin miscellaneous, currently 5850, move to 4,000. City clerk special events, currently 2,000, move to zero. City clerk miscellaneous, currently 2,000, move to 1,200. This one, each department has postage, so it's, 240 is the number for each department, but move the total from 30,100 to 28,600. And then, from the economic development, foregoing involvement with the ICSC, there's not, I don't have a particular line item, because that's done through various travel and other sources, but I'm sure we could find it. And then, also, the, the food vouchers.
What is the amount of the ICSC, please?
I believe it's $3,000, give or take, it's, it's?
Anything further?
And then, the food vouchers for the events was $5,800, move that to zero, and that, again, is various lines within the budget. So some of it is community, community relations or special events, and?
Do you have a total, I just need the line item, and do you have a total on that?
It should be $14,950.
Okay, so that is the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilmember McCune. So discussion is on this proposed amendment to the budget. Councilmember Edens? I'm sorry, I had Councilmember Dodwell first, Councilmember Dodwell.
I don't think you had me, that was from a previous?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Edens?
Would you like to go ahead, though? Okay. Yes, to cutting the vouchers, that's fine, I support that. It's actually funny that you brought up postage, I did have that on my list, but my concern was the opposite. I know that we were trying to send out mailers on this budget for the watershed erosion task force, we decided to increase the scope of that to notify anyone within a floodplain, so I don't think it made it to this fiscal year. So there would be increased mailing costs for that. Councilmember Bartoni and I had a ward meeting, there's a cost associated with that. So I was wondering with the, the postage, if the city administrator had taken into account increased postage opportunities, perhaps if other wards also do meetings as well, which would, which would be great. I actually see the cost going up and not down, just in the effort to keep our residents more informed, and I do want to make sure the watershed erosion task force has money built in.
Without objection, relative to your?
Also, I have more, more down the list.
Well, and, and to those, hopefully, what I'm going to propose without objection, since there are several of these, and some of them implicate administrative functions, if we could start with an opinion or thought from our city administrator, and then kind of let that?
Okay, can, can I have the floor again after that, because it wasn't done?
You can't.
Perfect, thank you.
Are you okay with that, or do you want to go forward?
Absolutely, fine.
Okay. City Administrator Anselm, do you have any thoughts on these proposed changes?
Yes, I would have some thoughts relative to those. Now, some of the items that Councilmember Stevens mentioned are new to me, so I need to do a little bit of research, and I would certainly offer up the availability of department heads to answer questions about specific line items, thinking of the city clerk's office in terms of some of the, the expenses that Councilmember Stevens has identified. In terms of the ICSC membership, our economic development manager has, has identified, he has, let me cut to the chase, he has a pretty strong leadership role within the ICSC. I believe he's a board member of, of the ICSC, and he helps host and sponsor some of those events that are held not just in Wildwood, but around the region as well, including the Midwest. So there is some travel expense related to that. I can tell you from past experience, almost every economic development program that's run by municipality includes membership and involvement in ICSC, simply because of the access it gives to potential developers and potential site consultants, who maybe represent a specific company that a, that a city wants to pursue and attract, recruit to Wildwood. So I would be reluctant to reduce that budget at all, simply because, again, of our economic development manager's leadership role within ICSC, plus the benefits that come from that. I've been to one or two of the ICSC conferences, it's been 10 years or more, but I found them extremely valuable, and I would believe Mr. Jackman has the same situation. To address Councilmember Edens' questions and comments regarding postage, when we did look at the budget, we cut public works departments postage budget significantly, because we had seen some of the costs related to the mailers for, for single stream versus dual stream. We don't anticipate that issue happening again next year, so we actually reduced that budget. I think there is a potential that, that we might need to increase that item, but again, I would have to take a look at that at mid-year. My request and directive to departments is, you know, whatever budget gets approved, we're going to stick to it this year, and if we have to bring any mid-year adjustments to council, we'll, we'll do those, but I want to make sure that we minimize the extent of those. So the budget as presented tonight is balanced, and I would also, I guess, at this point, yield.
Do you have any opinion on administrative miscellaneous, or city clerk special events, or city clerk miscellaneous, or food vouchers?
I mean, I, I would, I would agree with the food voucher aspect. I don't know that we need to necessarily provide food vouchers to, to those, now that, traditionally, those have been provided to volunteers who help us with those events, you know, so if we're going to ask them for six, seven, two, three hours of their time, we typically would provide that voucher for them. I would feel comfortable taking that item out of the budget across the board for all events. And I need to do a little bit of research, and I can do it in a few minutes here, but I don't know if our city clerk, or if any of the other department heads who are in attendance tonight can address some of their specific items while I do the research on the administration, if that'd be acceptable.
Back to you, Councilmember Edens?
Yes, I was going to speak in, in favor of our economic development manager's membership, and, again, encourage the council to remember that this is standard practice, but also we have, it's less than 2% of our total budget is in the economic development silo. Julian, would you like to say any more about that? Or, yes, you don't have to, but, just because not everyone's on the committee, and so, I think you've made a really good case for it before, but I think it's important for everyone else to hear.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions. City Administrator Anselm mentioned the access that being in that organization provides, as far as it being the premier organization for commercial real estate developers, restaurants, retailers, and the like. I do serve in two leadership roles within an organization, so it is, I think, important to continue to be involved with that group. If the city is interested in recruiting any commercial development, any type of retail or restaurant to the city, involvement in that organization is critical. So I would obviously advocate for it, but I work for you all, and I'll do whatever you would like.
Okay, thank you. And now to Ms. Sturmlinger regarding the city clerk line items. One thing we've talked about as a council is how important we see personal development growth, so these are opportunities for that, and professional training, and I believe certification as well is included in some of these line items.
Ms. Sturmlinger?
In the special events, it would be some of the municipal league type of, like the luncheons and different education opportunities.
And, and having been to those myself, I know a lot of folks haven't done that. Councilmember Garitano is on the board, I believe, Councilmember Werther is, or is that, yeah, I think he's involved as, involved as well. I found it to be very valuable on my end, but I can also say that I have seen numerous city clerks there for not only networking, but those professional development seminars. And so I think it's important for our staff to have an opportunity if they wish to attend as, as well. And I think that was all of the, the line items. I'm glad you addressed the postage as well. So as, unless you change your amendment just to include dropping the, or just, just to drop the vouchers, which doesn't pay for it, I just can't support it as-is. And remind me, is the Barbecue Bash cosponsored, sponsored outright, or is it a private event?
The total cost of the Barbecue Bash is between the two entities, St. Louis Home Fires and the City of Wildwood. I don't know a particular ratio. My suspicion is, is that the majority, if not a greater than majority, is by St. Louis Home Fires.
Okay, thank you. So, as we're talking about events with citizens' interests, I go to the Barbecue Bash, I love it. What we saw was a very successful holiday event, and we didn't have the money to do even what the business association expected of us. We had to make some really hard decisions. So you're not only competing, you know, just for the Barbecue Bash, but you're balancing that with other opportunities and needs that could be less of a line item, very nominal, we're talking under $10,000, and we, we can address that at mid-year if there's funds for it. But it's not unreasonable to fund this, but not be able to fully fund it, just because, I mean, we're cut, we're cutting public safety, I mean, we're cutting everything. There's, I have a hard time, and I realize there's silos and money allocated for different things, but if you'll notice, there's no money for guardrails this year. So I have a really hard time trying to cough up money for the Barbecue Bash, when we made something else not our priority. And granted, there's no request for that right now, but I, I just, it's a problem.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Thank you. So, the voucher part, I would not have a problem taking those vouchers away from the council, but I hadn't thought about the volunteers, and I think that we probably should continue to do that. But even if I was in favor of cutting all of this stuff, $14,950, I would not be in favor of giving this to the guys for the Barbecue Bash. I mean, it wasn't that long ago, and I mean, it was either last year or the year before, the debate around this was, should this funding be zero? And that was a strong debate, and people just did not like the council and public money going towards a private event. And this isn't going to be a popular thing, but in my opinion, that event has also deteriorated the last couple of years. There's less booths, half of them are not, they're running out of food at a very early time. I mean, I think the guy who's running the event needs to take a look at himself and the event that he's running, and not be sitting there coming to us saying, I need more money. He needs a better operation. So regardless of this, I mean, I would, I'm not going to make a motion that we don't support it, but I would, I would be leaning towards taking money away from this event instead of putting more money into it. The other stuff, I mean, you're really, a lot of this, and, you know, you're looking at the miscellaneous, it was 2,000 last year, it's 2,000, a lot of those items, you just budget the same as it's been in years past. I think that's probably a common practice here, as it is in businesses. But, you know, even with the vouchers, I don't even think that's a budget item, I think that's just an administrative item, that when we come time to plan in these events, that we just don't hand them out anymore. And that's just something that we just decide to do as a council, or, you know, in the committees, but I'm not going to be in favor of giving any more money to the Barbecue Bash.
Councilor Garitano?
Yeah, well, I know Barbecue Bash is a popular event. I love my burnt ends, I love the barbecue, and I think that everyone here would agree that we want to see this event try to stay. But however, you know, pruning, as we're doing with the budget, is a good exercise, because it makes the tree stronger. And we have asked across this city, across all areas, to evaluate and trim some of that fat. And when we trim, we look at how to become more efficient. So it's done in normal business, and it's being done here as well. And obviously, we have some revenue challenges, not only just Wildwood, but it's a nationwide problem, that cities throughout the country are not anticipating any revenue growth. In fact, some are anticipating revenue declines in 2020. Now, some perspective, too, as Councilmember Bartoni mentioned, the Barbecue Bash is not a solely-run city event. It is not the same as a city concert, it's not the same as a city, you know, celebrate Wildwood event, and it's not the same as a, we got some hand signals here, what's going on?
I can't, I have you on the list, I can't interrupt another speaker for you, so as soon as he gets done, so, go ahead. Councilmember Garitano?
Okay, so, there's something, too, that's different about the Barbecue Bash, because it is something where we don't really run the whole show here, as Councilmember Bartoni said. I love and appreciate the fact that there is a promoter here who has a business, who's here to do a job, and we've been really fair, and we've given a lot, and that, Councilmember Bartoni is right, this comes up every year, and we always say, we want to see more transparency. Is there profit being made? Is there, you know, something that we don't know? And so by doing the trim on this item, just like we've done across the board with all the budget items, it's making everyone think about how we could be better, how we could be more efficient. So before throwing money at it, I'd like to see an answer to say what could be done by providing the $35,000 subsidy that our city residents basically provide to this Barbecue Bash. You know, it's a different conversation if this was our own completely city event, but it's not. So I don't agree with throwing money, and I certainly do not agree with sacrificing even more what we're doing, taking away from our city, because at some point, we may as well put a sign at the door that says we're closed. I mean, I don't know how much we're trying to cut, get the priorities straight here. So I'd like to see some conversations happen with the promoter, see what you could do with 35,000, maybe you need 40, that's fine, maybe we can look to give five. But to give a whole other 15, we don't even know if 50,000, which is the amount, is even going to work in 2020, because that's the amount that was in 2019, and I think that's been increasing every year. So, again, love the Barbecue Bash, but we all have to think how it would be more efficient, how to work smarter. Thank you.
Councilor Werther? Councilor Werther.
Thank you. Given that a month ago, proposals were made to go ahead and reduce council salaries and the mayor's salary by half, and that item, in order to restore services to residents, was referred to the committee and ultimately buried at the committee, and now we're talking about small items, again, picking through the budget. I'd make a motion to refer all this item, all these items to the committee and have that be sorted out, because clearly, council didn't do its job at the committee level to put its act together and to put its budget house in order. So that's my motion.
There's something I'm sure.
My motion's to refer back to committee, so these items can be discussed.
So you have a motion by Councilor Werther to refer the budget to, you're referring the budget to committee?
No, I did not refer the budget. I referred the items that have been discussed. The line items have been brought up by Councilmember Stevens, Edens, and everyone else.
Okay.
Because now, suddenly, it's fair game, when a month ago it wasn't.
Yeah, there are a lot of expenses we had we ought to discuss. So the motion on the floor is to refer, is there a second to the motion to refer Councilmember Stevens' motion, the items? We have a second to the motion to refer to admin public works? Is that correct, Councilmember Werther?
That's the appropriate place, and I think part of this goes to parks and planning.
I'm just asking for a yes. So the motion on the floor is to refer, Councilmember Edens.
Just point of, so, but the motion to refer is only on the admin miscellaneous, special events, postage, the economic development membership, and the...
The motion to refer is referring the main motion, which is to...
Those budget cuts.
To fund BBQ Bash.
Okay.
That's what's being referred.
And yours as well, Ms. Edens.
Was anything in particular that I said, because I don't know what...
Just a moment, please, just a moment. Councilmember Garitano.
Yeah, I have a question. I think, Joe Vunich, you might be able to answer this question here. Regarding the BBQ Bash, because we're talking about it, and we're talking about trying to get it to 50,000, do you know if we get it to 50,000 that that's going to work in 2020?
The assumption of the department, when it originally included that amount in its budget for initial consideration by city council, is that it would. There is a point of no return. The department recognizes that. As you've mentioned, the cost of the BBQ Bash has continued to climb. We saw the greatest increase when we moved locations from town center here by City Hall to the community college site, but the department would not ask for additional funding beyond that amount.
Councilor Edens, do you, so do you understand the motion to refer, what it is?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, because it sounded like the concerns that I had about postage and fully funding the WBA cosponsored city event could be addressed at mid-year. So I'm not sure that it necessarily needs to go back to committee.
So you would vote against the motion to refer?
Well, only because I don't agree with the other parts of the motion as originally proposed by Councilmember Stevens, but I really, really appreciate Councilmember Werther taking what I said seriously. I just think staff addressed it.
If the motion to refer fails, you could make a motion to postpone to that point, just like was done previously with the other item on Burt Street, Burt Forest. Councilmember Remy.
Can Mr. Vunich, can I have a question for you? To gain some clarification, to see how I would vote on the motion by Councilmember Werther. One aspect in relationship that I didn't see listed here is allocation of funds for the 25th anniversary Founder's Day Parade. Is that incorporated in here that I just missed it?
It's part of the celebrate Wildwood line item.
Okay.
Collectively, the parade and all of the other activities are under that single category or line item.
And we reduced funding for that, for the 25th anniversary?
We certainly did.
Okay.
Councilmember Garitano, I'm sorry, Councilmember Stevens, on the motion to refer, you had raised your hand before the motion refers, so this is discussion on the motion to refer? Is your item on the motion to defer or refer?
Hmm, I, no, I don't understand what we, like, we wouldn't be referring the budget.
Correct. We'd be referring the item that you've made the motion to as proposed by its amendment.
Okay.
Councilor Garitano.
Yeah, again, I think the motion to refer, go back to the point of that I think it would not get anywhere because we have to ask all areas to make trims. And I bring this up because I'm the liaison with the Celebrate Wildwood Committee. We originally had a budget of, what, $110,000, Joe? And we've made sacrifices to bring it down to $85,000 for our residents, and we're doing that by combining two events. But see, we recognize that we have to take a cut here. And so again, I'm asking that also, we look at how then the BBQ Bash can still move forward, but try to see what they could do to bring that cost down, just like everyone else is making a cut. It's only fair, I think, that we ask that event. And again, to Councilmember Bartoni's point, there are a lot of questions about how we do that, sorry.
That's right. So this has to be on the motion to refer. So any further discussion on the motion to refer, this is the, for clarification, not the budget, that's the main motion. This is the motion to refer the amendment as proposed by Councilmember Stevens to fund BBQ Bash with the several items. That's what's being referred.
Point of clarification here.
Please state your point, Will.
Well, I just, I need some clarification. So if the motion to refer fails, will it go back to my original motion, and could I speak on that at that point?
No, it's your motion that's being referred.
Can I s...
So we have a main motion on the floor, which is the motion to pass the budget. Councilmember Stevens has made a motion to amend that, to fund BBQ Bash with the six or seven line items being readjusted. Councilmember Werther made a motion, which I clarified, which is not to refer the budget as a whole, but to refer this issue. Is that correct, Councilmember Werther?
This issue, including the items that Councilmember Edens brought up.
Right, including every item that anyone brought up, in fact, relating to it, which is Councilmember Stevens' motion to fund BBQ Bash with the six or seven line items being adjusted. That's what would be referred if this passes.
Correct, point of order, but that means then if it doesn't pass, we actually go default back to his, we discuss his motion.
Correct, that's correct.
I believe that's what he just asked.
Okay, that's correct. Yeah, if this fails, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the word fail. If this fails, then we would go back to discussing your motion. If we don't, then we would not.
Okay, that's what I would like to do.
All right. Okay, seeing no further discussion on the motion to refer, let's call the roll, please, on the motion to refer.
Councilmember Dodwell.
And a yes vote is to refer.
No.
Councilmember Remy.
No.
Councilmember Edens.
No.
Councilmember Brost.
No.
Councilmember Garitano.
No.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
No.
Councilmember Farmer.
No.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
No.
Councilmember Greg Nonny.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
No.
Councilmember McKeon.
No.
Councilmember Boat.
No.
Councilmember Bertolino.
No.
Okay, so the motion to refer fails. We're now back to the main motion. City Administrator Ansem, just one second.
Just to answer Councilmember Stevens' initial question regarding the items that get identified, the miscellaneous category under city administration, in the past, historically, we've run around $3,200, $2,700 per year for miscellaneous costs. The reason that went up for fiscal year 2020 is because we have a trademark application renewal for our city logo at a cost of about $1,800 that occurs every couple of years. So 2020 is the year that that renewal will hit the budget. So we can certainly do our best to keep the other miscellaneous expenditures to a minimum, but I would not recommend taking that $1,850 out of the budget for the trademark renewal.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens, do you have anything new to add to what you've already stated? So your motion is now back on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay. So what new information do you have relative to your motion?
Okay, so there's, we have a large budget. So I had asked the council when I emailed, like, if this is what we want to do, where would you find the money? I mean, if you look through the budget, we have a mayor's bold trophy for like $255. We have, you know, the recycling mailers that went out for $7,000, just for the scrapbooking and babysitting events that we do, which are great events. Citizens love them, I'm sure, but the meals alone were $3,800 just for those events. We sponsored some, four people to play in a golf tournament for the YMCA for $800. We have $18,000 in litigation contingencies based on some campaign shenanigans.
Actually, I think that's because we have had to spend several thousand dollars in complaints, but...
No, that's $18,000 in litigation contingencies spent on a particular case involving you. I won't go into the details, but we put up a stage for $2,500 for the big chief. We just, there's, there's a lot of money in the budget, and there's a lot of things available that we can do. And I hear a lot of people saying, well, we don't want to do this, we don't want to do that. But where would you find the money? Because I feel like when we removed the BBQ Bash from the calendar, and then we also are offering $15,000 less than what we paid last year, that feels to me like it's an invitation to the promoter of the BBQ Bash. It's an invitation. If we want the BBQ Bash to be here, we need to put it on the calendar, and we need to fund it to the level that council has already decided to fund it. I don't know if anybody realizes this, but the Planning and Parks Committee, when I was on it, I had made the motion to do a wait-and-see approach on the funding for the BBQ Bash. I made the motion to say, hold off on giving the additional $11,000. Let's see if the organizer can come up with the money, and then we'll investigate and go forward. The council had flipped over, the council changed, the new Planning and Parks Committee that Mr. Garitano was a part of, the number of others are a part of, they decided to go ahead and give the extra money to the BBQ Bash. This is the new norm. It's just what it costs. It's $50,000 if we want to keep the event. So I understand not wanting to give the promoter the additional funds, and I had already done that, but council changed that decision and offered the $50,000. So my contention is, if this is what it is, fund it, schedule it, the residents want it, and if you don't want to take it from the ICSC, or the mayor's picnic, or the golf tournament, or whatever, then make a motion to amend and find the money for it. Or just vote up and down on my motion, and we'll see where we go from there.
That's what we're going to do. Councilmember Remy.
I appreciate the enthusiasm. I don't disagree with your enthusiasm for the Bash. I actually don't think anybody's against a Wildwood BBQ Bash. I like your idea of waiting and seeing. I think it's the best way to approach this. There's too much uncertainty about the costs that would be incurred at this point without understanding specifically from the sponsor for this. So I think, under normal circumstances, I would make a motion that we would do exactly like you said, wait and see. The problem is, that's counter to the budget that were put before us, which would be the same thing anyway, so I would make a motion to do the same thing we can do right now. We've allocated $35,000. I think it's important for us to find out a little bit more information from the actual sponsor, and then we can move forward, exactly like you recommended previously to the Parks and Planning.
Councilmember Edens.
I do like the wait-and-see approach, and I think your logic was really good on that when you were at committee. I think the difference is, we had the money, we had the money last year. This year, we don't. So moving it out of committee and through council was in a totally different context. And we went through this last time, there were two different calendars, and it was on, I believe, the events calendar, but not on the main calendar, or vice versa. So it was scheduled, but the dates weren't finalized. And I'm, there is validity in the items that you just mentioned, but I'm not sure that even if you added up all of the small things, like $800 in golf, we're going to get to that number. And sometimes you end up with small things that you pay for, because picture it like buying a car, okay? You can't afford the Ferrari, but you still have $40,000, and you can get the Subaru. And you still would like to use money and get a vehicle, so you get what you can afford. So I think what we're seeing is that we're using less money than what we have to pay for the BBQ Bash in different increments sprinkled around. And so I think that's what we're seeing. And if it adds up, great, but we can look at it at mid-year, it doesn't make any sense to not talk to the promoter, I think, a little bit more first.
Councilmember Garitano.
Well, yeah, and I love the BBQ Bash. I've said it over and over again, and whenever it's going on, you could see me, and I could see a lot of people there. But, you know, we've got $35,000 now on the budget here, so we've got some money down, some serious money. It's not, you know, a couple of quarters or whatever. But I think, yeah, the wait-and-see approach is brilliant. You know, we can, basically, let's see how those conversations go with Joe Vunich. We've always got mid-year, we can come back. So thank you very much for that suggestion. I support wait and see.
Hey, I had two times. All right, so the amendment to the budget's on the floor. Show of hands, all in favor of the budget amendment proposed by Councilmember Stevens. Please raise your right hand. We have three, Councilmember Dillard, Councilmember Werther, Councilmember McKeon, Councilmember Stevens. All opposed, please raise your right hand. Any abstentions? So that was everyone else opposed. Motion fails. Councilmember Stevens.
Can I make a new amendment to remove the food vouchers for events? That would get $5,800, and move that towards the BBQ Bash?
You can. Is there a second to the motion?
Hold on, I was gonna...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Also, we had discussed the Etherington Road project and the importance of it. I would also add to that to move that to the 2023 year versus 2024, since it's such an important project, and we do want to get this done.
Without objection from the council, since those are not related, we'll take them separately. We're going to divide the issue, unless you object to that. Okay, so the first motion is to defund the vouchers in the amount of what again, Councilmember Stevens?
It was, give or take, $5,800.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember McKeon. Discussion on the motion? What is your point of order? Does your motion include moving it to the BBQ Bash?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Councilmember McKeon, are you in support of that?
No.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? We're going to just do this casually. Is there a second to the motion to end the food vouchers and move them to the BBQ Bash? Second by Councilmember Dillard. Discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Dillard, Councilmember Werther, Councilmember McKeon. All opposed, please raise your right hand. Any abstentions? One abstention. You're abstaining, Councilmember Boat? Are you abstaining or voting against? Okay, abstain. And Councilmember Jordan, you abstain?
I'm abstaining. I am not opposed to getting rid of the vouchers, but I don't want to apply it to the...
Okay, thank you. So we have two abstentions, and those in four, those that were four as listed earlier, and everyone else was against. Okay. Councilmember Edens.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor.
Sure, I'm sorry. We have another one from Councilmember Stevens, my apology, and that was what again, to move Etherington, the Etherington Project from what year to what year?
Construction from 2024 to 2023.
Okay. And is there a second to that? Second by Councilmember Werther. Councilmember Garitano.
Yeah, Rick, what's the, how does that impact the timeline?
How's it impact the timeline? I think Councilmember Stevens is suggesting the construction could begin earlier by moving it forward from 2024 to 2023.
Okay, is it doable?
We will do our best.
Okay, roll call vote, please, on the motion. Sorry, Councilmember Bartoni, my apology.
Rick, is it doable without postponing a different project?
Well, certainly, we haven't had an opportunity really to look at the program as a whole. When we put it together, we were trying to be cognizant of the revenues that were anticipated for those years and trying to balance them out on an annual basis, so I'd probably defer to our city administrator.
City Administrator Ansem.
Yeah, I was going to mention, with regard to our capital improvements program, that is built out over the course of a five-year period, and we built that out for the next five years, under the assumption that we want to balance budget for the next five years. So if you move a project from one year to another, we'll have to look at all of the projects again on that list and see if we can reshuffle, if that's the council's desire to continue with that.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yeah, the reason I had went ahead and offered to move that up, because I, let me bring it up here, give me one second. On the five-year capital improvement, I believe there's, 2023 was light, and so that's why... I believe there's on, there were, twenty-twenty-three was light. Um, and so that's why, uh, I offered to move this up. I can't find it.
Yeah, I, I don't know what you mean by light, but, but as the city administrators said, those, those light items were in, for each capital expenditure year were, were delineated without having to have a deficit budget. And I don't recall there being a lot of play, but go ahead.
Can't find it now. Can you come back to me for some, or?
Councilmember McKeon?
Oh, yeah. Okay, here we go. Uh, yeah, for roadway improvements, uh, there was only seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand for twenty-twenty-three, um, so in there, so which, which is, which is not a large amount in comparison with other years. Um, and also, it, it shows that there's possible grant, grant funding that could be had. So, um, I think it's fine to push the timeline, and, uh, worst-case scenario, you just move it back a year. Um, but, you know, it's an important project. People want to get it done. Um, I have spoken to, to residents on Etherington Road. They, they agree. They want to, they want to have it happen, so.
Thank you.
That was my motion.
Uh, we did have a second to this one, did we not? Okay. Um, that was right, Councilmember Werther. All in favor of, uh, this motion, please raise your right hand. Uh, can you please restate the motion?
To move the Etherington construction from year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-three.
So all in favor, please raise your right hand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, raise them high so we can see, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Okay, we have eleven in favor. All opposed, raise your right hand. Two, three, four. Any abstentions? One abstain. Councilmember Edens, motion carries. So now we have the budget as, uh, presented as amended. Any further comments or amendments? Uh, Councilmember McKeon, did you want to raise something? No, you're next. But you don't have to. You're, you're.
I was just trying to get some research.
Oh, I'll turn my mic on. The only other thing that I was concerned with is, we're looking at budget, and I think that this was off. I couldn't get on email because mine's still broke. Um, and I, sorry, Sam, I did have a question. Is the, the gas allowance for the mayor and for council, I'm just trying to look at to see what that total amount was, and since we're trying to cut the budget with salary, is that something that we can look at for just another drop in the bucket? Would that be helpful? So that's kind of where are we at with that? I couldn't find it on the budget. That's why I wanted to. It's what I'm thumbing through, and I can't find it.
I believe, and, and city clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe council and mayor travel appears in, in that particular line item. I don't know that it's a significant enough amount to move the needle, uh, with regard to our overall budget. I mean, we're, we're talking about an eleven, you know, seventeen million dollar expenditure budget, and I would guess that the travel for mayor and council is less than a tenth of a percent of that. So I, I don't know that that conversation would be very fruitful, but I would certainly think if we're, if, if we're going to have a conversation at Admin Public Works regarding council and mayor salaries, that would be the appropriate.
Well, it wasn't salary. It was just more of other, you know, kind of trying to look at both sides to say, okay, well, if it's not this, then what's this? So I, I hear what you're saying.
I'd recommend to refer that.
Councilmember Jordan?
I have a question for city administrator Anselm on the budget. Um, as you know, we have an RFP, soon to go out about rural internet, and, um, extremely important initiative in that we have a major utility missing from a large portion of Wildwood. Um, when I, currently, we have, as I understand, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars allocated for, um, rural internet, and with the RFP, there's no chance that we're going to not be, um, in at least million-dollar range for a solution, and probably several. My understanding is that you felt like we could, um, if the RFP comes back and there is a viable solution, um, say in the three to four million dollar range, that that could come from the, um, general fund unallocated, or unrestricted, rather. Is that still the case?
Yeah, my, my answer to the earlier question regarding general fund, use of general fund fund balance is the same. You could allocate, council could allocate that eleven million dollars that's unrestricted towards anything. I would note, and I might be speaking, speaking out of inexperience here, but I do believe there was an ordinance in place that says any potential project that's going to cost over, I think, three million dollars has to be go, has to go to voters. So my recommendation with respect to the rural internet, um, funding is let's, we've identified three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for next year. Let's wait and see what the response is to that RFP comeback. There might be a company that says we don't need that much. Not saying that's a realistic answer, but that could be an answer. But I would wait to hear from the respondents to that RFP to tell us how much we need, and then we can negotiate that process. And then if it falls under that, that amount that we would need to get voter approval for, we could then bring that to the body and then discuss at that time potential uses of funds. But we just don't know the, the amount, um, at this point, so.
But with, with the respect to, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Sorry, I, I was just, because we don't know the amount that we need yet, I'd be hesitant to put that number in the budget at this time.
But were, were the amount to be two and a half, three million dollars to, to resolve the problems that the city, you know, we would need to come to for the current eleven-point of eight, or whatever the amount was, eleven million dollars that's in the unrestricted, it's not already kind of pocketed for other things?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I just would ask the council, as we're talking about money, so that we keep, be mindful that that's going to be a very important item in two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Councilmember Edens?
Okay, three things, and I'm done. Um, I noticed on the, um, income that we have some cigarette tax income. I was just wondering, because I know the state, I, unless I'm wrong, does not tax vaping, um, but cities may. Do we? And is that a potential fund source for the future as it increases in popularity?
I might need some help from, uh, city attorney, perhaps to answer that question.
The specific question of selling the sale of vaping products would likely, I'd have to confirm this, but likely be a license tax. That would be subject to voter approval.
Okay.
So it's possible, but I'd have to take the time to review it first.
I wonder if there would be momentum for that, given the news articles with deaths and accidents, and because tobacco products are often used in that, and we are, in fact, taxing another form of tobacco. So do I need a formal motion for the city to explore that as a revenue stream?
If there's no objection, we'll put that on the, uh, Admin Public Works agenda.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Are you fine with that?
Second, second item. Um, so I know that we had approved a camera contract, but Huawei was involved and is on, you know, the federal no-no list for obvious reasons. Um, when we go through another camera contract, um, I know it's some prop P funds, but if I believe, if I remember right, we still had a line item and additional expenses. I don't remember it was covered fully, but I just want to make sure that we've considered that for this next fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And one last thing, um, I'm not really concerned about the aesthetics of the women's restroom. Of course, I would love it to be fixed, but I am really concerned about the foundation and the constant water coming in, and, um, you can only inject and patch for, for so long. So, um, what did you take into consideration on the, the budget for foundation?
Similar to my conversation with Councilmember Jordan regarding the cost of rural internet, since we don't know what the cost is actually going to be to fix the building, um, we are waiting on the final report from Geotechnology, the company that we've, we've hired to study, uh, the building. Once I get that information, uh, in that report, we'll be able to see what that potential price tag might be. I hesitate to put a number to it, uh, simply because it could range anywhere from not much, you know, it might just need to replace the roof, to, you know, there might be many more serious issues that we would have to consider, so.
And there's some insurance involved and something else. I, I would just, you know, as, as Councilmember Jordan was mentioning things, and asking the council to consider funding as a priority, you know, please consider, consider structural issues.
And, and to your point regarding insurance, I, I did speak with our insurance carrier, and groundwater intrusion is a covered expense. We would really have to pay the deductible.
Okay.
But, again, without knowing the full picture.
It's the extras, like mold removal and things, and, yeah, drywall replacement.
Councilmember Remy?
Um, I realize that this is not going to, um, move the needle on our budget, but I think it's a, an appropriate gesture in the context of, I'm not in support of, uh, minimum, um, of voting down, uh, vouchers for volunteers at our many different city events. But I will make a motion, um, and my motion is to, uh, eliminate the, uh, uh, as Councilmember McKeon alluded to, my motion is to eliminate reimbursement for gas for elected officials if the one-way is less than thirty-five miles.
Um, the city attorney will need to comment. We have an ordinance on that for council and, uh, the mayors that may need to be changed to accommodate that. City Attorney Young?
Actually, the, the city charter expressly provides both for the council and the mayor that they may receive reasonable reimbursement for actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of their duties. Um, so the question would become, and would require a little of research, whether or not we could infringe upon that charter provision.
Motion for prepare legislation to that, to that.
So the, you, we can't, well, the legislation would be to present a charter amendment to the voters, not an ordinance, because it's a charter.
I'll withdraw my motion then, understanding those contexts.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bartoni?
So the only thing I wanted to do is just kind of educate everybody a little bit on e-cigarettes and vaping products. They are subject to taxes on, in Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, but it's a sales tax. They are not taxed as tobacco, as, because they are not a tobacco product, and nothing would make the FDA happier than to be able to tax that as a tobacco product, but that's more at the federal level. But it is an item that we do collect tax revenue on.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Edens?
But you could tax the cartridges that go in them that have the tobacco.
They do not have tobacco. They have nicotine, they have nicotine in them. They do not have tobacco.
Oh, obviously, I don't smoke. Okay, thank you.
So we'll let Admin Public Works, uh, look at that. Okay. Bill twenty-five thirty-one, the budget as amended, is before the council, seeing no further discussion. Mr. Termlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty-five thirty-one as amended.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Please restate the motion.
Uh, to pass the budget, uh, twenty-twenty budget as presented and as amended, and as amended at this meeting this evening.
The.
The amendment from Councilmember Stevens on Etherington. Moving that from twenty-twenty.
Four to twenty-twenty-three.
To twenty-twenty-three.
I know, I know, I know. By abstain, because it's going to be a balanced budget problem. We're kicking the can down the road, but I'm going to have to vote for this, so yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
No.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Moving to Bill twenty-five thirty-two, it's before the council for final passage, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Aimed by Councilmember Remy, second by Councilmember Farmer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Termlinger, please read Bill twenty-five thirty-two.
Bill twenty-five thirty-two, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an addendum to and a renewal of the police service agreement with St. Louis County for the year twenty-twenty.
Thank you. Uh, city administrator Anselm, anything you'd like to say relative to Bill twenty-five thirty-two?
Uh, I don't believe so, mayor. I presented the information at, uh, the first reading, so it'd be available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes, uh, Sam, I just wanted to ask you, what is the allocation allotments, do you know, from our budget versus the, uh, prop P money? Do you know what the amounts are?
I don't know why I have that information specifically in front of me, so.
So you don't have like a percentage?
I mean, the, the total, total police budget is about four-point-nine million dollars.
Right.
Close to five, and I think prop P funds, our city treasurer's given me some, uh, some signs in the back. Maybe we can invite him. What was that? Yeah, I think it's one-point-eight is what we generally receive, uh, per year in, uh, in prop P funds, so the rest of that would come out of the general fund, as it has.
That's the total, that's the total prop P, P funds, right?
About one-point-eight, I think, is what we receive every year.
But you haven't put in that, put all of that into the police funds, right?
No.
That's what I thought. Okay, so it's less than a million dollars, probably.
I'd say it's north of a million, less than the one-point-eight.
Okay.
And my apology, uh, this would be a good time, uh, to thank, uh, our city treasurer, Steve Cross, and, uh, Don Kaiser for all of their hard work, uh, not only on the budget, but throughout the year, uh, in furtherance of the city. They're with us tonight in the audience. So thank you so much for your, your work for us. Um, Councilmember McKeon?
I, I just have a question on the Exhibit A for the agreement. Um, I see a supplemental transportation cost for Ford F-150 pickup for seventeen thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Can you explain to me what that is and why we need it?
Uh, perhaps, um, Captain Mundell can, can help answer that question.
Without objection, uh, Captain Mundell, would you, uh, please come forward and see if you could answer that question?
Was this presented to you, uh, city administrator, for their request?
Uh, the Exhibit A was presented as, as it's listed and provided.
But the clarification for why the needed vehicle was not explained to you?
Um, not to my recollection, no.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to hear why.
Captain Mundell?
Uh, the pickup truck is assigned, would be assigned to the, uh, parks officer, uh, as a utility vehicle in the parks.
Gotcha. So that would explain why it's a supplemental, then, to the police services agreement.
Right. And I will say that I get, just for your information, I do get calls and emails relative to, um, people that are in our, in parks that are controlled by St. Louis County and Wildwood jurisdiction, that don't have permits and other things that are going on. So, um, just FYI.
I, I just want to question it, and I, because there's been a lot of requests for additional equipment, trailers, uh, we spent a lot on trailers for the new barricades. It just seems like it's just more and more that keep adding. So I just, how have we been utilizing this up till now, uh, before this truck, I guess is my question.
Do you like to answer that, Captain?
Well, I, I don't know if I can, uh.
I mean, I don't think we have, I guess is the issue.
Right. We didn't have it, uh, currently, there's a, uh, a Tahoe that we're, that we're using that's, uh, really passed its life. Um, you know, with the addition of the trailers, that it was a utility vehicle for the purpose of, uh, of those trailers. Uh, the barricade trailer is extremely heavy. Um, so it does require.
So is the Tahoe pulling that now, the trailer?
It, it was, but it wasn't fully loaded with, with all the barricades that we purchased.
I, I'm just disappointed that, that this is just now coming up, and I didn't see it in Board of Public Safety, uh, discussed. So, I mean, that was just my only question, because that is seventeen thousand dollars. And I just want to make sure it is a necessity that is needed, um, based on this contract, because this keeps increasing, increasing, increasing. Um, and I'm just, I just want to show that we, we have restraint here. And, um, city administrator, is that our truck, or does that go to the county? Who owns that truck? Does the city of Wildwood, or does St. Louis County?
The county owns the truck.
County owns it.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And I, I would also add, you know, to your, to your conversation, or your point about capital expenses going up, that's not necessarily true. Um, we had a hundred thousand dollars that I think we approved in this year's budget. Next year's budget, um, is fifty-five thousand for capital, you know, so that, that's gone down by almost half for, for next fiscal year.
Okay.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Is part of the reason that the truck is being purchased so that particular riders, hikers, et cetera, their gear can go into the back of that truck to be transported back to their vehicle if and when needed, or to move any components that the police department will need in order to safely guard our citizens at our various events?
Right. A pickup truck is very useful. You know, we're, most of our vehicles will end up being, uh, the Explorers, which are a small, uh, uh, It's just a smaller vehicle as opposed to the ability to put larger items in the back of a pickup truck as opposed to an SUV.
That's what I thought.
And really, for pulling, pulling those trailers, traffic projects, there's a lot of stuff we do that the SUV or the car just is not practical to do.
Yes, you have a truck chassis versus a vehicle chassis, which provides for safer transport for the officers and the equipment that is purchased by the city for use at those events, correct?
Correct.
So I don't have any problem with an additional change in the type of vehicle and/or the additional cost.
In my recollection, I could be wrong, this did go through Board of Public Safety.
I believe it did. It was probably before I was here.
Yes, it did.
We're just following through with it.
I think so. Councilmember McKeon?
So just as a follow-up, since the city, the taxpayer of Wildwood is paying for this pickup truck for St. Louis County to own, are you going to keep it in the city of Wildwood and you're not going to let it utilize for other jurisdictions that you guys manage? So it's going to be strictly used here for the city and not go to Jennings or somewhere else?
Right. It's marked as a Wildwood police vehicle. However, you know, realistically, any type of emergency, that vehicle could have to respond to another type of emergency. But we are not going to loan it out on a regular basis.
I'm just concerned because I know that you can utilize it for another city, that they also pay a contract rate to you. So I don't want Wildwood citizens paying for a truck that's used for Wildwood, and I see that Wildwood truck in Fenton for another event. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on the resources that we're paying for, Wildwood citizens, for their equipment, it stays here, and it's not utilized across other county jurisdictions that they contract with, that they pay for as well.
Okay, so we have, Councilmember Edens?
Just a quick question. Did the city look into purchasing it and the city owning it and then giving it to the police for use? I'm assuming that you did, and that's why it ended up written, but that might fix the problem.
Under the contract.
Okay.
Vehicles are provided by the police department.
I see.
You do pay for the vehicles that we use, but the county maintains them, the county ensures them, or less absorbs all those costs.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yeah, I did have a question, but it did get answered, so it's good to know that the county is maintaining these vehicles. And I greatly appreciate what you guys are doing here in Wildwood. So I think to Councilmember McKeon's point, the vehicles, they all have city of Wildwood on them, so it's very obvious if it's somewhere else. I can understand if there's like a serious emergency, that, you know, something significant, you know, I forgot what the panic button is pushed, you know, you have to respond to a call. But, you know, you have to basically, basically keep the vehicle here. So, you know, I would, I would support it, I believe, strongly in safety, and I know in case of an emergency, if an officer is hurt or something like that, I know that the officers have to respond, and that's something that we want to, because they would do the same thing for us here in Wildwood.
Right.
So, thank you.
I will add that there are more vehicles assigned in Wildwood that the city does not pay for. So our fleet is a fairly good-sized fleet, but they're not all charged to the city.
And I suspect, I mean, we can look at the contract, but something tells me that if we went down the road of things that we're paying for being used elsewhere, that would probably present contractual issues. So I'm sure that they wouldn't want to do that. So, okay. Thank you for, anything further, Councilmember McKeon?
Just for clarification, it's not about safety. I know that they do secondary for traffic control. I've seen Wildwood and Fenton, our cars down there for a secondary. So we're paying for that car to be just a traffic control or a lights, hey, we're doing construction here. So that's my concern, is that we're taking our resources and using our cars and we're in there for a Fenton-type project that is not an emergency. So that's why I wanted to make sure that we're not lending out this truck to all the parades or other functions that are non-emergency outside the city of Wildwood.
And I think he has.
In response to that, those would be cars that are assigned specific to officers, and again, the city is not paying for those.
Sure. So that was my question. So I didn't want you to think it was safety or an emergency at all, just in my questioning.
If I could respond, I totally agree. I know that you're on board with safety here, but I was making the point there that the vehicle is going to be marked city of Wildwood, so it's going to be very obvious here. I don't see any other precincts here in Wildwood. I haven't really picked up any that I've noticed here, unless it's maybe a local resident that parks on the street. So I think that's probably the vice versa. If not, or if there's a serious emergency, again, an officer gets injured, hurt, I know that the whole county responds, so that's.
Absolutely. And, you know, recent events, when we require additional manpower, if the other precincts do provide manpower, and it's also not charged to the city, so.
Thank you for the information, Captain. Appreciate it. All right, seeing nothing further, Mr. Sternberger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2532.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther? Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
You have a question, Councilmember Stevens?
Yes, the owner for the Miller House has been waiting patiently on our discussions. Could we move her bill to first up on the new business?
I think that the next two will go rather quickly.
Okay.
Bill 2533, in the first readings before the council, for first reading, and it concerns all wards, is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Farmer. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention. Councilmember Werther, any other abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2533.
Bill 2533, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to enter into an amended agreement with the Missouri American Water Company for its planned use of city-owned internet poles in association with its data collection unit, DCU installations.
Thank you. Joe, anything you would like to mention further relative to Bill 2533?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the city council approved an agreement with Missouri American Water Company to allow its use of certain city-owned internet poles for their data collection units. The agreement was finally passed, which was provided to you as part of the ordinance tonight. The alteration or amendment is on Page 3 and relates to electrical service associated with the operation of the data collection units, which are solar-powered.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? All right, seeing none, Councilmember McCutcheon?
I'm curious. We ask internet providers to provide us a fee usage per pole. Why are we not requiring American Water to do so as well?
Well, in the instance of Bayes E.T. and Whisper ISP, they are private, not-for-profit companies. Missouri American Water Company is a public utility, and in return for their utilization of our poles, they're allowing us access to any of their vertical improvements.
Thank you.
All right, seeing nothing further, Bill 2533 will be on the agenda for the council's next meeting. Moving next to Bill 2534, it's before the council, also for first reading, and it concerns Ward 6. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Boe, seconded by Councilmember Jordan. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2534.
Bill 2534, an ordinance authorizing the approval of a second replacement cash deposit agreement for the Hankin Valley Estates subdivision, a 13-lot residential development, recorded in plat book 354, page 176, being located on a 44.2-acre tract of land, which is part of the northwest quarter of Section 21, Township 44 North, Range 3 East, city of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically located on the east side of Hankin Road, south of State Route 100.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2534?
Just a couple of quick points, Mr. Mayor, with your permission. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, this particular replacement cash deposit agreement relates to the maintenance escrow only. All the construction improvements have been installed, inspected, and the escrow released.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe or any comments relative to the bill? Seeing none, the bill will be before the council at its next meeting. Moving next to Bill 2535, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward 8. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Garitano, seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2535.
Bill 2535, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, that hereby authorizes a change to amended C-8 Planned Commercial District, ordinance number 2352, to accommodate the addition of specialty retail stores and shops as part of the reuse of an existing building situated on this site and being located in the town center area under a set of specific conditions that are consistent with the letter of recommendation approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 18, 2019, and thereafter forwarded to city council for its review and consideration, St. Louis County's P.C. 112-89, Cliff Refcard.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2535?
Good, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, just a couple of quick items.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, this particular item was presented to you tonight at a public hearing. The intent of the public hearing was to accept public comment. There was none other than the petitioner herself. The business that is requesting to relocate to this particular property is a specialty-type retailer and is located in town center. The lease associated with that particular entity and the building is to come to term at the end of this year, and therefore, as mentioned, the department, with the acknowledgement of the city administrator and city attorney, did present the bill at the same time as the public hearing. Department does appreciate you accommodating such. I would also note that Ms. Miller requested a second reading tonight, so that the business that is relocating from one part of town center to the Miller House can stay in operation and not have to close.
Thank you. Councilmember Remy?
A motion to make, do a second reading tonight.
Made, we have a motion for a second reading by Councilmember Remy, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. This will require two-thirds vote. We'll do a voice vote and see where that goes as to whether we need to do anything further. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2535.
Bill 2535, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, that hereby authorizes a change to amended C-8 Planned Commercial District, ordinance 2352, to accommodate the addition of specialty retail stores and shops as part of the reuse of an existing building situated on this site and being located in the town center area under a set of specific conditions that are consistent with the letter of recommendation approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 18, 2019, and thereafter forwarded to city council for its review and consideration, St. Louis County's P.C. 112-89, Cliff Refcard.
Thank you. Joe, anything further you have to add on this?
No, sir. Just thank you again, city council, for accommodating this process. I know it's unusual, and hopefully we won't be doing it again anytime soon. And I am available for any questions regarding the commission's recommendation.
Okay, we have any questions for Joe? Seeing none, Mr. Sternberger, please, thank you, Joe. Please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2535.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe? Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Moving next to Bill 2536, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Greg Nani. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2536.
Bill 2536, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, revising the budget for the city of Wildwood, Missouri, for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2019, and ending on December 31, 2019.
Thank you. City Administrator Ansem, do you have anything you want to mention relative to Bill 2536?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, regarding this year-end budget amendment for 2019, I would respectfully request at this time, given council's earlier decision to cancel the second meeting in December, we would appreciate a second reading on this item, but I'm certainly available to answer any questions as our department heads and our finance officer.
See one who wishes to make a motion for a second reading, made by Councilmember McCutcheon, seconded by Councilmember Greg Nani. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Two-thirds vote required appears to be met. Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2536.
Bill 2536, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, revising the budget of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2019, and ending on December 31, 2019.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Sternberger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2536.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens? Just repeat that.
No.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
All right, bill passes. Moving next to Bill 2537, it's before the council, first reading, and it also concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Sternberger, please read Bill 2537.
Bill 2537, an ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 210 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Wildwood by enacting a new section, 210.025, and providing, and providing for the offense of domestic assault.
Thank you. Councilmember McCutcheon?
As you all know, I initiated this bill last time and asked that it be brought back to council this evening, and the purpose of that was because we know that, per research, that domestic violence incidents occur at a higher rate during holiday seasons. But after reviewing Bill 2537, I'd like to ensure that our police force has a method of tracking incidents to establish a pattern of domestic assault, and all protections afforded to victims is included. So therefore, I move that Bill 2537 be referred to the Board of Public Safety for the furtherance of protection of victims within our city.
We have a motion to refer the bill, seconded by Councilmember Bertolino, so the discussion is on, only on the motion to refer. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer? Councilmember McKeon?
Just a clarification, why are you referring it? What was the?
I didn't see a statement that would ensure that we establish a practice for pattern, because we know that if we establish a pattern here in our local city, that, then that also helps when it goes to county, and then if it goes to state, it also helps reinforce and, I guess, upgrade the conviction. So I would like to see that included. And there was also, I didn't think there was enough specifics, per se, about stalking and some other things that typically occur with those kinds of assaults. So, but basically, I want to make sure that everything that we can do to protect, to protect victims of domestic assault be included in this bill, and I want to make sure that there is a way to establish a pattern and behavior.
Yeah, and I would support that. I think there were some questions with the language, so I appreciate you referring, so we can work on it a little bit further.
Councilmember Edens?
I did think about stalking, but I wondered if there was another ordinance that that fell under. I guess my question is, is how is the Board of Public Safety the best option to establish the practices as opposed to the police force or the prosecutor? Don't, shouldn't, are they not independently tasked with doing that once an ordinance is passed on their own computer system, or do we need? I guess that's a question for Captain Mundell, is how would the Board of Public Safety assist or provide direction as opposed to you just doing it on your own?
Captain Mundell?
I don't know, actually. Any arrests is tracked in the court system, so that's how the police department would look at it, or how the prosecutor would look at it, and determine how they're going to proceed with another prosecution, whether to move it up. It's going to be based on the previous incidents and the previous court interaction for a defendant.
So then we do have a pattern. So then we do have a pattern, a way to track the pattern?
There is, right. It's through the court system, basically.
So then, I guess, does it really need to go back to the Board of Public Safety? If you're already doing it, then it doesn't seem like that there needed to contribute to that. Now, if there is a question about the language or beefing it up, then that's different, but in terms of establishing a tracking process, it sounds like there's nothing. Is there anything left to do? I guess is what I'm asking.
As far as tracking, I'd say no.
Okay.
So, to the maker of the motion to refer?
So, Mr. Young, do we need to insert language to that effect?
At this point, I don't see any reason to insert that specific tracking language into the bill.
And per our discussion today, the instances that weren't explicitly stated in the ordinance, do we need to send it back to Public Safety in order to enhance that, or do you think it's sufficient as it stands?
Ultimately, it depends on what the goal and purpose of the bill is for the City Council. So in terms of the offense that's stated in the bill, that's sufficient for that offense. If there are other offenses the council would like to review, I see no, I have no opposition to it going to the Board of Public Safety for further review.
So by going to the Board of Public Safety, we could maybe enhance the bill in some way to make sure that we give the ultimate protection to domestic violence?
I think more review is always better than less.
Then my motion stands.
Councilmember McKeon?
I still would want to refer, I think the other thing we need to look at is maybe talking to the prosecutor to make sure she's not, or he or she, whoever's sitting on the bench at that time, is taking plea deals for it, or they're not taking it under advisement because it does do a disadvantage to the individual. So I think that there's more of an enforcement of talking to the courts to make sure that they're following through and not, just because it's deferred back to the muni court, that they don't throw it out or minimize the charge too. So again, if you want those additional protections, that the victim is protected, that's another thing that we need to be aware of, because that is left up to their discretion on whether or not what they want to do. So again, I want to support that, and I want to say the reasons why, not just based on what was just discussed.
This is on the motion to refer. Councilmember Edens?
I just want to ask Captain Mundell if it would be helpful to discuss the following in Board of Public Safety, or if it was covered enough in the language, and I just wasn't clear on that. There was a good article, I cannot remember if it was from NPR or BBC, but it was on, often what's not talked about is when a child actually abuses a parent or an adult in the house, a sort of the hidden, another hidden embarrassment of domestic violence, whether that be a teenager that is larger than a parent or an adult, or an adult child still at home. So was that clearly, was how a child contributes to domestic assault covered in this? And if not, I would like that to be maybe discussed at Board of Public Safety.
City Attorney Young?
In terms of child, I want to be clear that if we're talking about a minor or someone under the age of 17, municipal court has no jurisdiction, there's the juvenile court.
Even if there's a city ordinance, the city ordinance wouldn't be something that the court could use?
Correct.
At all?
Correct.
Because it's mine, okay. Thank you.
Motion to refer is on the table, all in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to refer passes, thank you, Captain Mundell. Moving into, we have no resolutions, moving into miscellaneous. First is approval of expenditures, you've been provided with the expenditures. Are there any questions, happy to address those, otherwise, we would entertain, I would entertain a motion to approve. Councilmember Stevens?
We have not been provided with the list of expenditures.
That's not what this item is.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apology. So this is for me to have the authority to approve the December 2019 expenditures, since we won't have a council meeting. Thank you for that clarification. We need a motion of that effect, if you want me to approve. Councilmember Bertolino, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell, any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, raise your hand, please. Councilmembers Dillard, Grogg Nani, Jordan, Stevens, and Werther, any abstentions? Motion carries, and as was my course in the past years, those expenditures will be provided to the council by email before I sign off on them. If you have any questions, you can let me know. Receipt and file, Joe? We have three.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, the first item for receipt and filing relates to a conditional use permit that was recently granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission to Chesterfield Montessori School. The conditional use permit is for a specialized private school, for all intents and purposes, an outdoor classroom area. The outdoor classroom area will be anchored by a 2,300-square-foot structure that will offer them storage, classroom space, and then also shelter if they get caught there in inclement weather. The structure will not be placed in any floodplain area or floodway zone. The conditional use permit procedures of the zoning ordinance of the city allows the City Council 15 days to exercise its power of review, like to review the decision of the commission.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe on PZ 15-19? Seeing none, next is PZ 15-17?
The Planning and Zoning Commission had engaged a testing firm to determine the water quality associated with Mr. and Mrs. Roberts' large water feature and associated waterfall. Results of the testing was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a certain level of treatment of the large water feature to address concerns regarding public health. Those requirements, and the final step in the CUP process, will be the site development plan, which Mr. Roberts and I discussed late last week, and we are in process of getting that started, and hopefully to the Planning and Zoning Commission in a short period of time.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? All right, last is the P&amp;Z Year Interview Calendar for 2019 is set forth in the amended bylaws.
If you were wondering, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been doing this past year, we have an answer for you now.
All right, thank you, Joe. Before we adjourn, City Attorney Young wants to make a clarification as to an answer that he provided earlier in response to Councilmember Edens?
Yeah, just to correct a misstatement I made, the juvenile courts do actually have jurisdiction over municipal ordinance violations, so in terms of the referral to the Board of Public Safety, that type of offense is something that they could certainly consider.
They could, I didn't need that added into the motion, it can still be discussed on the count. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garitano?
Just a quick comment to thank all the city team for the outstanding winter fest that took place here. It was a great time, and I was truly impressed with the turnout that we had, so hopefully we can keep that going. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodwell?
Just a quick thank you to the committee that helped locate and the council that ultimately hired Sam Anselm as our city administrator. I think we've gotten some things moving forward with the city staff. I want to say also an extreme thank you to city staff and those who stepped up even further, Joe, you're included, to guide city staff and the council through this past year. I think we've done a lot of really amazing things. I've really appreciated seeing the growth of the City Council and their demeanor and their interactions with each other, and I want to say thank you to council as well for working in a professional and collaborative environment, more so than we had in the past, so thank you all.
Councilmember Edens?
I just wanted to say thank you to staff and the WBA, and Julian and Joe especially, for the holiday event that we had. It was wonderful, I heard lots of good things from residents, I heard a couple of things that they wish would be expanded on next year, so I hope we consider that, but what a great start. And I, next time, when you're challenged to an ugly sweater-wearing, please do not leave your council member hanging up here by themselves, so please consider it for next year, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? All right, seeing none, Joe?
There was a brief discussion about the Proposition P funds, the public safety tax. When we were going over the video cameras, the department, with assistance from the finance manager and the city administrator, put together a table that summarizes where that $1.8 million goes, so to speak, and most of it is allocated toward police, police overtime, the Senate Bill 5 requirements relating to a public safety assistant for the prosecuting attorney, and then finally, $7,500 for live-scan fingerprint station. If you do the math, only $78,000 of the $1.8 million is available for equipment purchases,